I'd like to bring the city council meeting to order for today, October 27th. So can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Niss. Councilmember Price. Councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Schmidt. Mayor Shepherd.
Here.
Eight present. Council will be going into closed session regarding conference with city attorney, existing litigation Sterling Park et al. versus City of Palo Alto. And I do not have any speaker cards.
No speaker, okay, because some of these, if you could... ...Park et al. versus City of Palo Alto. And the council has voted 9-0 to authorize the city attorney to settle the case of Sterling Park versus the City of Palo Alto, Santa Clara County Superior Court, number 109 CV-154134, for recovery in the amount of $8 million to be paid by the developer to the city's residential housing in lieu fund. And this is for affordable housing, is that correct? That's correct, okay, so this is... Thank you very much, and good job. Appreciate the work that you did on that. I can wait for a few more minutes for colleagues to get back from break. We do have a couple of public speakers, and I want to make sure that they're here for them. Okay, are they... Okay, and here they come. So, we have a few public speakers, like I said, for oral communication, and... Oh, I'm sorry. Before we go into that, let me actually follow the agenda. Agenda changes, additions and deletions, and I don't believe we have any. Jim, there's nothing that I can remember from this morning?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and so let's go right into city manager comments.
Okay, thank you, council members. Let me see what I have here. Did want to share in before the council meeting that our small city, Palo Alto, won the Public Power Utility of the Year Award from the Solar Electric Power Association. It was presented last week at their international conference, recognizing our long-term leadership and innovation in promoting solar energy. Our city offers a wide variety of solar electric programs for the entire community, including rebates, the potential for feed-in tariffs, new local solar plan, and progressive renewables portfolio standard, as you on the council are well aware of. And obviously, the movement that you've made on being really sort of focused on our sort of first-in-the-nation carbon-neutral electric supply and dedication to 100% carbon-free electric portfolio factored into that recognition and award. As of today, October 27th, our new Mitchell Park Library now accepts returns of library materials in the book drop. So the book drop at the temporary library location at Coverly is now closed. Library users are reminded that books and other library materials may be returned at any library location. So folks in the neighborhood or for whom the Mitchell Park Library would be more convenient are welcome to return their materials at Mitchell Park. There are two community outreach workshops that will be held this week for the Parks, Trails, Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. The first... Well, let me condition these. The first workshop has had been previously scheduled and is still scheduled for tomorrow at the downtown library, and the second is Wednesday in room H1 of the Coverly Community Center. Both meetings will run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we'll invite the community to engage in providing guidance and input for the development of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. You will notice, however, that they conflict directly with the World Series, an anticipated coincidence when they were scheduled. So for the diehard Giants fans who will not be, certainly at least at the first one, we have scheduled a third workshop for Tuesday, December 2nd, at the Lucy Stern Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to make sure everyone would have a chance to participate. Today, the city received entries from design teams who are interested in the city's 101 pedestrian and cyclist bridge design competition, and the competition jury will meet this Saturday, November 1st, at 10:00 a.m. to review the entries and select the top three design teams that will be asked to develop conceptual plans for the competition. The jury's meeting is open to the public and will be held at the Palo Alto Art Center Conference Room located at 1313 Newell Road. The five-member jury selected by the American Institute of Architects, C.C., excuse me for whatever that stands for.
California Council.
Thank you. I did wanted to avoid the acronym itself, so thank you. Includes the following members: Judith Wasserman, jury chairperson, local architect and former Architectural Review Board member; Steve Burrows, Executive Vice President, USA Director of Buildings, and PBS Television Program Host on Engineering and Ancient Structures; Kathy Diano Blake, landscape architect and Associate Director of the Stanford University Campus Planning and Design Office; Susan Chin, architect and Executive Director of the Design Trust for Public Space in New York City; and Sam Lubel, the West Coast Editor of the Architects' Newspaper based in Los Angeles. And then, did want to share with the whole council, as part of the Tobey Court Campus for Jewish Life Development, the developer associated with the Moldal family residence's senior housing development has agreed to provide 24 BMR units in that development. This project does provide a unique housing product, which is an assisted living and senior community hybrid model. To qualify for a BMR unit, qualifying tenants pay to substantially reduce BMR entry fee in order to occupy the unit. And this unit was amortized over five years, so if the tenant lived in the BMR unit for over five years, they would not receive any of their entry fee back. Market rate tenants are guaranteed a 50% or 90% return of their entry fee. But even with aggressive marketing, given the uniqueness of this product and the original renovated BMR terms, the city was only able to get a few units occupied with qualifying tenants, and for quite some time, remaining BMR units sat vacant. Did want to share that, recognizing that the current terms were not working, the city and the developer negotiated revisions to the program, which required a slightly higher BMR entry fee, but guaranteed the occupant a minimum 50% return on their fees, similar to the market rate tenants. And in addition, the city agreed to a floating unit mix to reflect fluctuations in both market rate and affordable rental preferences. The hope was that both changes would result in greater occupancy levels, and I'm happy to report that the program revisions have been a great success, with all but one remaining BMR unit now occupied. And that's all I have to report.
That last unit is under contract, though, to be occupied. That's the way I understand it. So they are...
Thank you.
Committed, committed, and I was able to... Ken Duker and I did go over there yesterday for their 50th anniversary celebration, and they are very happy campers over there. So it's a great community to live right there at the Jewish life. It's really fun to watch them, so... All right, now, we do have oral communications, thank you, community. So this is when you can speak for three minutes, and you can... Members of the public can speak on any item that is not already on the agenda. We have three speakers so far, and Jim Wang, you are our first speaker, to be followed by Mark Weiss. Did Mark come back? And after that, Danielle Martel.
Yeah, good evening, council, and thank you, gave me another opportunity to speed up. My name is Jim Wang, living in Boys Avenue, and today I'm only going to present one page, so it's pretty simple. And most language I use is actually staff's language, it's not my own made, so I think it would be much better. And in front of the discrepancies and no complaints, and the program manager, Stephen, ordered the appliance, one is the owner, another is architect, to make the correction. And Steve did a good job, I appreciate. And on January 6th this year, I was able to met with the acting director of the Planning Department, Aaron, and I show him the evidence again, and also new finding, and he also acknowledged, yes, they need to put more pressure on the other side. And also told me, say, it's not going to sign the final unless these things be addressed. Very appreciate. And both Stephen and Aaron, they are very capable, they know what I'm talking, even I'm not the architecture professional. But however, and no execution has been taken, and the final inspection still went through. And following is the sample statement Stephen sent to the architecture and the owner. So I'm randomly to read a sentence. And the second paragraph, please note that I will not able to sign off on planning final inspection unless the window are double-hung with obstructed glass were required. Great. And third paragraph is, I'm concerned with the changes you have made without approval during the construction process. Include a cadda tree removal, this is the backup, have a citation, Dave Dr. signed it. The penalty is $500, good price. And tree mean the oak tree, this is the different incident, and they treated the tree several times. I was able to pull the police report this morning, and generally, part of the police were called, and even this language I not fully understand, but I can figure out, is generally say, you know, the subject and are cutting down the tree, are cutting down a city tree. Then next sentence say, tree department not to pick up, I believe it's not pick-up phone call, something like that. Then response to assisting the unit. So this is the police department report. Oh, it's already done. It's fine, so you guys got a copy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and I don't see Mark in the audience, so let's go on to Danielle Martel, to be followed by C. Ready.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Keen, I'm Danielle Martel. I'm a daughter of the American Revolution. I've lived my life in Palo Alto. I'm a fifth generation from here, and I... This is my home, and I have taxpayers' rights. This is the second time I've recently addressed council regarding a fair hearing. Since mid-August, I've been asking for my hearing rights, and the City of Palo Alto continues to fail in its legal obligation to supply them to me. I requested a hearing so that I could confront my accusers. The City of Palo Alto must operate within the law or dismiss their case against me and stop this harassment. Please order, order the city attorney's office to immediately dismiss their case or give me my due process rights and extend the hearing date so I can conduct discovery and prepare. When each of you decided to become council members, you took an oath upstairs in this building to defend our constitution. Our constitution states that no one shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. This is America, this is not China, this is not Russia. The hearing procedures should not be carried on like a Franz Kafka novel, The Trial, or like a kangaroo court. There is no way I can prepare for my case unless I have discovery of the evidence. If any of you would like to meet to discuss this case, or discuss what I believe the harassment and poor treatment behind this case is really about, I'm available at any time. I'm going to leave two copies of a document that spells out my due process rights. It's from the Cornell University Law School, with hopes that you folks will review it. One, I demand to be told the name of who is appearing to prosecute the case against me. Two, who can answer to hearsay? Our city attorney's office wrote me the city will not call witnesses. My Fifth and Fourteenth Amendment rights guarantee that I'm able to cross-examine witnesses. If Palo Alto has no witnesses, their case is hearsay. How can I cross-examine hearsay? Three, I'm being stonewalled by the attorney's office. I continue to demand a complete list of all witnesses and all accusers' names and their contact information so that my family and I can hire an investigator and conduct discovery. Again, please order the City of Palo Alto and the city attorney's office to operate within the law, Mr. Keen, or drop their case against me.
Thank you.
I have taxpayers' rights. Thank you.
Thank you. C. Ready? You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Palo Alto citizens, as well as the council. So I want to spend a minute or two for us to prepare for Ebola. I know it's happening in the East Coast, unless you've already covered it. I think we need to prepare ourselves, have the emergency preparedness, how do we tackle this with Stanford, and come up with a little plan as to who's going to do what, who's going to do when, how are we going to do it? It isn't that far, it's only 4,000 miles away, somebody's going to slip into this town, whatever means, you know, driving, coming through the airports. So let's... I plead to the citizens, as well as the authorities, as well as the city manager and the council, to get some preparedness, but think ahead a little bit, because these things happen, just like another earthquake, you know, and we need to think about that. And that's all I was going to say. Thank you, and happy Halloween.
Thank you, and our final speaker, Mark Weiss, is not in the audience. So, next agenda item is the consent calendar, and I do have speakers for item number two, but I also believe we've got an interest in having item number two pulled. So do you want...
Well, I just received notice, and I do appreciate that from a number of council members indicating they thought that they would be in interest in pulling the item, so you may want to do that.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and ask to pull it, and the two of you want to join me on it? Okay. And we talked about this in pre-council, that we would do it after the shuttle, because we've got a consultant with the shuttle, and that way, and staff will still be on hand to cover this agenda item, so if that's okay with you. I can either hear from... There you are, Mark, you came back. I can either hear from speakers now, or we can hold the speakers until we take this up.
So just briefly, though, you said we'll take it up after the shuttle. We also have a closed session going on Coverly, and I think that's important. I mean, it depends on how late we go with the shuttles, I would assume. We're going to do the 10:30 check-in like we normally do?
Yes, we... Yes, absolutely.
Because I would have some concern about, you know, going too late.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, I might suggest you might want to hear from the public now on the item, just because you may have a long discussion on the shuttle.
Okay. And if they don't want to, we can hear from them, but only speak one time. So those that would like to speak on item number two for consent calendar will go ahead and take that, and if you would rather wait until after the shuttle, then we can keep your card, and we can take your public comment at that time.
So Mr. Weiss is also here, and I think we should let him speak.
All right, from oral communication. So, Mark, we're going to go ahead and slip you in now that you've come back, and sorry, I waited, so we will...
I'll go 60 seconds.
Hang on, okay. We're going to go ahead and let one more speaker for oral communication, which is Mark Weiss. So go ahead, you have your three minutes.
Good evening, Mark Weiss, 1788 Oak Creek Drive in Palo Alto. I rent an apartment there. I grew up here, I went to Gunn, I went to Turman. Rent control, I think we should discuss rent control as a community. Is it appropriate? Is it too big of a hand of government reaching out into the private sector? Forty percent of us rent. I've met a lot of families in recent months who say, gosh, they just upped my rent $500, I think I might pull my kids out and move somewhere else, or something like that. I think it's a moral issue. I think if we're discussing how many more houses we should build here for the nice families who come here to work for the big tech firms and all that, we should talk about the average Palo Alton, and some of those people might benefit from rent control, or at least tenants' rights, or some kind of discussion. Maybe we'll decide not to do it, but my understanding is, we haven't really talked about it in about 30 years. We have a mandatory mediation program, but that's more of a landlord amenity, it's not for the people. Thanks.
Well, thank you. And then I'm going to make this item number two from consent calendar eight A. We'll take it up after item eight. I have three speakers, I'm going to call you, and if you would like to hold your comment until after the shuttle, just let me know. So our first speaker on this is Wayne Douglas, to be followed by Mark Weiss.
I've read the almost hilarious emails that have come in on this, which suggests a disparity between the idea of being transparent and hiding it under the long-used technique of putting it as part of the consent calendar, so I understand Greg Scharf's concern about deferring it ever backwards and so on. But I'll just say that if I'd known about it, I might have asked for the job. I do have a journalism degree, and in fact, I'll tell you a story about that as part of my presentation, which is in 1968, when I was a senior at Marquette University in the journalism program, I took a class in public relations by the sainted Professor Don Ross, whom I'd had two years before in a reporting class, and he was excellent. He proposed a scenario, terrible situation of a pharmaceutical company that had a bad batch of medicine and was trying to deal with the aftermath, and he asked for all of us to give us, give him his, our impressions of what we could possibly do. And we spun our way like crazy with all kinds of interesting measures and so forth of what we could do. And finally, Don just stopped the discussion and said, he sort of rephrased the question. He said, "Not only what should we, what should we do in this particular situation that I've... What should we do in general? How do you approach these kinds of things, period, regardless of the circumstances?" And it may be an illustration of what it's like to go to a Catholic, even Jesuit university and any public institution, that he answered his own question. He just said, "Tell the truth." He said, "It's very helpful to tell the truth, you only have one story to remember, and don't worry about all the spin." So that would be my approach, tell the truth, however embarrassing it may be, which sort of reinforces the message I heard in my other Catholic school, grade school, where the nuns used to use the phrase, "Tell the truth," and finish it off with, "And shame the devil." So here I am using words like "truth," "shame," "devil" in a 21st century political campaign. I must be more old-school than I thought. Thank you.
Mark Weiss, to be followed by John Friedrich.
I never studied with Esther Wajzicki, aka Waj, but there are thousands of young journalists who have, many of them still live here. I studied journalism with Carol Jones, dearly departed, Tom Harbeck, who went in to become a big-time advertising producer, Tim Farrell, pretty well-known in Palo Alto, trained at the Times Tribune. I have a blog, I've written close to 1,000 posts under the name Plastic Alto, subset probably 200 of those are on policy per se. We have commissioners, there's something in here about the commissioner's job is to revisit some of the documents and reaffirm them. What I'm saying is, what a waste of $175,000, really, what a boondoggle. $140 an hour Kendall Flint is charging us, her secretary is charging us $45 an hour, Steve Flint, $125 an hour. I've put in 1,000 hours, I'm not going to charge the people, our people, my people, $2 million. I do it out of love for our community. We don't need, we don't need this kind of thing, this is a waste of money.
And John Friedrich.
Good evening, friends and fellow citizens. I would agree with the earlier speakers about this is a misplaced expense, and as somebody who's running for city council on the attrition of city staff and committing those funds to capital improvements and infrastructure, I would say that although this is small by comparison to many expenditures, the 172 or 175 could be better spent. In addition, it says in the report, "Recognizing that our Palo Alto initiative will only have lasting benefits if it increases staff capacity to engage with members of the community, the selected consultant will also work," and wah-wah and woof-woof. This idea of lasting benefits, increasing staff capacity, is not fulfilled by outsourcing a job like this. If you want to accomplish the aims of this project, you should do it in-house. If you decide to take it out to a consultant, you need to change the language of it. The project's manager, Claudia Keith, will be the consultant's point of contact with respect to performance, progress, execution, et cetera. You should change that in the scope of services to have the point of contact, the city manager, who is a council-appointed officer and would have direct accountability to the council. If you're going to farm this stuff out, you're not going to get the effect you want with a program, our Palo Alto. And so if you're going to spend this kind of money, I would suggest maybe committing it to shovels, bigger shovels, better shovels, more shovels, to dig your way out of the problems you're creating. $175,000 is completely ridiculous and defeats the very purposes of the scope of services you're seeking here.
And our final speaker on item two is C. Ready.
Good evening, citizens of Palo Alto, as well as the council and managers. You know, this $175,000 is probably not the right time to spend this money. I think we should donate this to Ebola Crisis, you know, the foundation that's solving world's problem. And this is something we really don't need. If we do need, we need to tighten the statement of work, and look at what the deliverables are, and you know, it's a two-year contract, and for someone to just come and help on communication, there's a dime a dozen, truly. You know, you go outside and you can find one, every street corner, you know, that claim that they have the communication skills, they'll help this, they'll help that. So I would recommend you spend this money for Ebola Crisis if you can still do it. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are, also have another speaker on consent, item number three, Stephanie Munoz. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and council members. It's about the...
It's about the utilities. I don't, I'm not directly affected because the, my property's in a condominium, and so my water bill is absorbed in everybody else's, and I have no, um, I neither have control over what, uh, over the amount I, what I pay, or, um, nor do they have any control over me and how much I put out. However, I noticed that there was a lawsuit of a person who objected to being charged a great deal for his water meter. And I know from having other properties in Santa Clara County and in the Water District that the, uh, that the water meter is merely a, a, a device, if you will. It's, the water meter makes it possible to charge people for the water in according to how much they use. It's not a benefit to the person, but surprisingly enough, they charge more for a large meter than for a small meter. Now, the person who was mentioned in this newspaper article wanted to go to a smaller meter, and that is eminently what the council, what the supervisors, what the gut, that's what everybody wants for the drought, is for everybody to use less water. It's really counterproductive for the water company, even if it's a city-owned water company, to try to get more money and make the person keep the larger meter. The implication is that he's going to use more water. You don't want him to use more water. And the, the person is really just, i- is renting the meter, but the meter only cost a, it, um, I bought a, I had to buy a meter for a rural property, and it ran around $75. It wasn't anything like what, what they're asking. So I think you should really look at the way that they're running the water and, uh, and the accidental over, overage of the water, which they used to make an arrangement for. They used to just simply charge people the wholesale cost, but then they decided they were losing money, or they weren't making enough money, and that, and they should charge them the whole thing. I think, I think you should really, because all of you are homeowners, you aren't, you aren't condominium owners, and, and you do pay that water bill. I think you could, you're in a very good position to see the actual fact of the way that the, the water company, the water utilities, even though it's the city, um, I think you're in a good position to see the way it, it works, and, and I wish you'd take a little bit closer look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to have an approval of the consent calendar with item number two being moved to eight A.
Second.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Greg. And this brings us to our action items for tonight. Our action item number eight is the expansion of the city shuttle program, phase two. "In February, council authorized staff to consider a variety of parking strategies aimed to improve parking supply to the downtown and California Avenue business districts. The expansion of shuttles was part of this strategy, which would both support commuters on public transit, getting to their place of work, and reducing traffic by reducing auto trips into Palo Alto. The first phase of this shuttle was an expansion of service with East Palo Alto, operations beginning in July. From University Avenue, California Train Station to Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, this route is fully funded by the city of East Palo Alto but managed by Palo Alto. Tonight, we are receiving the staff report, which includes the independent assessment from Fair and Peers, transportation consultants assessing our existing shuttle routes and proposed new routes. We are considering next steps described in the staff report, which are: increasing the frequency of the current crosstown truck shuttle, consideration of the new west shuttle route from Caltrain Station to Bay Shore Business Park in Mountain View, and asking the businesses to fund or offset these costs, an approval of a trial service for a trolley between downtown and Stanford Shopping Center for the summer of 2015, and then based on this direction, asking staff to return with a budget amendment ordinance to allocate funding from the earmarked reserves for this project in fiscal year 2015 budget." I noticed that we have our planning and transportation chair, Mark Michaels, here tonight, so he will be reporting out on how planning and transportation, um, considered this. We do have the verbatim minutes in our packet, and we were talking about that last meeting, that I think it would be nice to hear from the chair with how all of that was bundled. So, I'd like to handle this by turning this first over to staff, and then returning to council for questions only, and then going out to the public, and then coming back to this, to council for comments and directions. Councilmember Schmidt, I see your light is on. Did you want to do any, okay, good. In that case, I'm going to turn this over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and members of the council. My name is Jaime Rodriguez. I'm the chief transportation official. The presentation tonight will be given by Ruchika Agarwal. She's our day-to-day program manager for the Palo Alto Shuttle Program, and presenting with her will be Steve Crossley from Fair and Peers Transportation Consultants. That's the firm that prepared the independent assessment of our existing program. And, uh, following our presentation, as you mentioned, Mayor Shepherd, we were going to ask Chair Michael to come up and provide a summary of, uh, of the discussion of the Planning and Transportation Commission. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Ruchika for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaime. Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and council members. My name is Ruchika Agarwal. I'm an associate engineer in the, within the planning department, and, um, I'm here to present the phase-two analysis, uh, phase-two pres-, um, I'm sorry, phase-two options for the Palo Alto Shuttle Program. We will be following a quick, um, agenda. Thank you. So we'll follow a quick discussion. I'll start the presentation with, uh, with the background of the Palo Alto Shuttle Program and the existence, um, the different routes that it has within the program. Then we'll talk about the independent assessment that was conducted by Fair and Peers Transportation Consultants. It was divided into various sections, so we'll start with the existing condition analysis and comparing it with other similar systems within, within the, within California. And, um, also, we'll, uh, talk about the proposed recommendations that came out of the, out of the study. Following that, um, staff has developed different, um, expansion options that we would bring it to the council and discuss those, including changes to the existing routes such as crosstown and implementing a new west shuttle route and, uh, University Stanford Avenue Trolley. And we conclude with the findings of an onboard shuttle survey rider that staff recently conducted over a period of last four to six weeks. And finally, with the recommendations and the next steps. The shuttle program in Palo Alto has been in existence since 1999. The crosstown route, as you see on the slide in the map, um, uh, over the years, the schedule has changed, but the, the route hasn't changed much. It is 100% funded by the city, and it provides a north and the south connection within the city. It connects the University Avenue Train Station to various neighborhoods within Palo Alto and, uh, business districts such as downtown, midtown, libraries, the main library, and the Mitchell Park Library, um, various senior homes such as Litton Gardens, Channing House, um, Avonidas, and Stevenson House. It's a very popular route amongst seniors, and we also have a special school run that operates, um, during the school times, and it serves the middle schools, the Jordan Middle School and the JLS Middle School. And that particular run is in operation during, um, during school season, when schools are in session. This, uh, this route operates Monday through Friday, um, all day long, from approximately 7:40 to 5:30 PM. The Embarcadero Route has also been in existence since 1999. This is a part of a commuter, Caltrain commuter shuttle program, and it is funded 25% by the city and the remaining 75% by the Joint Powers Board. It provides a connection from the University Avenue Train Station to the businesses located, um, east of Highway 101. It's very popular amongst, um, amongst the commuters and also school students, because there is, the, the dotted line that you see in the map is the special school service that, um, is also provided in addition to the crosstown's, um, service to help the Jordan Middle School kids. And this route serves the Palo Alto High School and is popular amongst students from Palo Alto High School as well. This operates during peak hours only, and there is no service from approximately 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and it's a weekday service, Monday through Friday. East Palo Alto Route is the newest route that has been, um, added to the shuttle program since July 2014. This route is funded 100% by the city of East Palo Alto but is managed under the Palo Alto's shuttle program. It connects the University Avenue Caltrain Station with the Woodland Community in East Palo Alto, and this operates seven days a week, including weekends, uh, only from about 6:00 to 10:00 AM and 4:00 to 9:00 PM, with no service during, uh, midday hours. With this, I'll hand it to Steve, um, Crossley from Fair and Peers, who would go over, um, the study analysis, independent analysis. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thanks for that introduction. So, we were asked to take an independent look at the existing shuttle system, as well as the proposed routes that have been developed by city staff to improve accessibility and mobility within the city. And I'll give a brief presentation on our analysis and our recommendations, and then hand it back over to Ruchika. So what we had asked for to do the data, to do the analysis was, what, what data can they, can the city provide to us as far as ridership, um, stop information, any, any census or GIS data that we could use to help assess, uh, the market demand, as well as the current, uh, demand for service, both with the existing and with the crosstown, or sorry, the, the crosstown and the Embarcadero Route. At the point when we did the analysis, the East Palo Alto Route did not have any data that we were able to analyze, so we went forward looking at the crosstown route and the Embarcadero Route. We were able to, to, um, obtain run-level ridership data, uh, from city staff, and that means that we were able to look at how much, how many boardings or how much ridership there was per run for each route, um, over the course of a day, uh, for both the crosstown and the Embarcadero Route. One thing that, that we didn't have, and we might be able to drill down a little bit better into the actual demand at stops and whether some stops are, have more demand than others, or whether the Caltrain Station for the crosstown route would be, is a viable transfer point from the ci, from the city up to the north or south on Caltrain. We didn't have that information available, so I'm going to talk about what we're able to, uh, discern from our temporal analysis of the ridership by run. We did find that, over the course of the day, for the crosstown route, the demand is extremely high. There is very little peaking. The school routes are an exception, and then the routes, the, the runs that are just on either side of the school runs, the AM and PM peak, do have high ridership. But over the course of the day, the crosstown route, uh, sees quite high demand, and it's pretty consistent throughout the day. This is contrary to some other systems where you have a lot of peaking involved, um, that there's much more ridership in the AM peak or the PM peak than during the midday. And that's also shown for the Embarcadero, since that really is the purpose of that route, to provide service to and from Caltrain, um, to the, the business park that is on the east side of 101. It additionally has some school runs, uh, but that is a, as a typical first mile, last mile type service, and Caltrain, as well as BART and all their private shuttles, operate similar service to that, uh, throughout the peninsula. The crosstown route, we also looked at the routing to try and understand whether it's matching up with the origins and destinations that people within the city want to get from and go to. We, we did a thorough analysis of that, and the routing right now does seem to cover pretty much as, as good as you can get in the, in that portion of Palo Alto along the Middlefield Corridor from the Mitchell Park Library, um, down through to the main library and up into university. And we also, we also recommended, as far as part of next steps for the study, was to do a survey, because we didn't quite understand who was riding it. We can under, we can, we can make an opinion that it's likely a lot of school, uh, students, as well as seniors, um, but the city has gone and conducted a survey, and I know Ruchika will get into the, uh, user, user types and, and who is actually riding the service in just a little bit. Amongst the Embarcadero Route, we also found that it was, it was very popular, um, in terms of actual productivity, or in the, in the transit world, we're determining what the performance of that route is. It actually doesn't perform as well as the crosstown route. And that, that was a little bit surprising, just because we know that there's a lot of people getting off Caltrain in the morning and getting on that bus, um, and actually doesn't perform quite as well, because there is demand both east and west, in both directions at all times of the day. And one thing that we put up there is just a comparison of the boardings per revenue mile. Again, that's just one metric. Another one is boardings per revenue hour, and that's typical within the transit community to, to understand how well the route is performing and whether you want to make any adjustments to that. And the next slide is actually giving us a comparison to some other systems, and, uh, we had recently, Fair and Peers, we had recently conducted an analysis of the Emery Go-Around, and that service up in, um, the East Bay, uh, just north of, just, uh, north of Oakland, is a very productive first mile, last mile system from the MacArthur-Bart Station. And we just wanted to show that the Palo Alto Route is actually performing, you know, nearly as, with the crosstown routes, performing nearly as well as these Emeryville, uh, Emery Go-Around routes. And actually, one of the, one of the issues that Emery Go-Around had, and that, why they asked us to take a look at the system, was they felt they had too much ridership, um, that some of their buses were full, their people were standing in the buses, especially other buses that were cutaways, where they only have one door, and so we went and, and tried to take a look at that system. So I just wanted to point out that there's really strong ridership, uh, for the crosstown route. The Embarcadero Route, again, since some of those buses are coming back empty, there isn't a strong demand, but if you, if you just look at the, if you double that and saying they're going one way, it actually performs, performs quite well. And then also, uh, if there's a future satellite parking lot, um, that is, that is along Bay Shore, then that could also increase ridership. I wanted to point out that we did do an analysis of how many people were on the bus, how many people were sitting versus how many seats, and because, um, the directional peak is different coming from the satellite parking lot, we did feel that you could, that the city could operate those buses without increasing the frequency and increasing the cost, without requiring people to, to stand or to be passed up by any of those, by any of the runs that are occurring. Just also wanted to point out that the entire VTA bus system and the Samtrans bus system, the Palo Alto routes are performing on par with those systems. Again, there are some routes that have a lot more productivity, such as a 22 or 522, than some of the other community routes, but overall, the Palo Alto system is performing on par, uh, with the other systems in, in the peninsula. One other thing that, that we took a look at was just what is, where, where could the unmet demand be, and does, do the routes match up with, um, where the demand could be? And this is something that, that we've been pioneering at Fair and Peers, and this is taking, we call this the Transit Likelihood Index. For this example, and we can take any number of different census, uh, metrics and, and put them together, but for this specific study, we wanted to focus on, um, a couple of the, uh, what we thought would be indicators of where demand would, would be for service within the city. And so we took a look at, uh, this, this combination graphic you see up there. We've combined senior population, the youth population, any zero-car households, population density, which is a great indicator, employment density, also a great indicator of what the trans demand could be, and also, uh, street density, so that the streets that are more on a grid system and more walkable, we assume they would have higher transit ridership. And this is all based upon information and just general best-practice research that, that we've done over transit demand. And what we found is that in the areas, that there are areas where there are, uh, more children and more seniors and some zero-car households, and that usually corresponds to the south Palo Alto area where the crosstown route is serving, also up along, I think, Loma Verde and the Alma area, and then over again, Bygones High School and Arasidero. And of course, because of the population and employment densities, downtown is also, um, an area where we would assume that there would be higher transit demand than other areas of the city where there are more single-family homes. In the report that we produced, we also just looked at senior population, and it relatively corresponds to that. And this just helps us understand where additional routes could be, or if you could reroute the service, but as you can see, the crosstown route does match up quite well with where the, what we call the Transit Likelihood to be in the city. I think at the prior meeting that I was at, at the Planning Commission hearing, I pointed out that there is the, the, uh, what's the name of the, the, it's the Oshman JCC Senior Center, and that's over by San Antonio. And right now, obviously, you can see that that area there by, by San Antonio, um, and the freeway is, is not served by the crosstown route, but we'll get to the west shuttle route in just a second, which would serve, uh, that population without requiring- in just a second, which would serve that population without requiring them to walk up to the crosstown route. So in addition to looking at the existing service, we also analyzed what the future service could be. And we also took a critical look at the routing, at the service frequency, at the schedule and made some recommendations. As this study finished and we delivered it to the city staff, the recommendations that they would like to move forward with are up there. The crosstown shuttle, because there is a strong midday demand and the crosstown shuttle did operate at one point at 30 minute headways, we were recommending a trial run to see if it would better meet the needs of the residents and visitors and employees within the city that are using that route. I've been taking a look at the survey data and frequency of service and reliability are the two biggest factors for individuals. And so while we would not expect a, you know, we probably would not expect a doubling of ridership, we have put in this report what we believe to be what we would expect as far as a service frequency elasticity. If you're going to double your service, how much ridership would you expect to, to gain out of that? And the current literature suggests there is no hard and fast rule within bus transit planning, but we expect around a 40 to 50% increase in ridership if you double your service. So if you go from 30 minute service, or sorry, 60 minute service to 30 minute service, you would expect to get about a 50%, a 40 to 50% increase in ridership. And that is in lieu of having a travel demand model that we can actually forecast ridership. On the flip side, for say Caltrain, we developed ridership models where we can actually use the, the VTA travel demand model and other regression based models that we've developed to forecast ridership. For a shuttle system, it's more difficult and so we wanted to provide that information that we would expect around a 40 to 50% increase in ridership when you double the service, which is what you would do from going from 60 minute service to 30 minute service. And just decreasing the wait time, which is also a reason why people avoid taking transit is having to wait and cutting down that wait from whatever the 60 minute wait would be. I know people are working on, working off schedules, but it would just reduce that uncertainty while they, while they wait for the bus. For the Embarcadero shuttle, that is already operating at higher frequencies than the crosstown route. It appears to be meeting demand currently and we also found that if the satellite parking lot was opened, those shuttles that are operating relatively between a 10 and 20 minute frequency, I'd say on average about every 15 minutes or so to meet the Caltrain trains, that would allow the shuttle to actually operate in the, in the direction back to Caltrain or back to downtown Palo Alto and you would not need to increase the number of buses in operation and increase the cost on that. I also wanted to point out that, that we again took a look at the routing and the routing along the Embarcadero is the most direct route. It just makes, makes the most sense. We're in agreement with staff with that. East Palo Alto shuttle, again, we did not have the ridership data to analyze that. It's a relatively new service, so just letting that play out and understanding the ridership on that and, and you know, surveying users to see if any changes are needed, but that was not a significant focus of our study. Just wanted to take another moment to get into the, the West Shuttle Route and I think actually I have another slide on that. So before that, let me just, let me just talk about the University Avenue Shopping Center trolley. The city was discussing doing a trial run for that and that would be a summertime shopping shuttle. One thing that we looked at for that specifically and made it, made a recommendation on that was the travel time that it would take for that shuttle to, to travel from downtown Palo Alto to Stanford University and back. And we estimated that would be approximately with the current mileage that they were proposing was about a 20 minute, 20 minute ride. If you have to wait for the shuttle and walk to your destination and you have about an hour for lunch, we felt that that total travel time, walk time plus travel time on the bus plus walk time to your destination, that may deter ridership. So we made a recommendation that you would need, you should either operate two buses to get 10 minute headways or shorten the route to be able to operate at 10 minute headways. And that is, that is one of the recommendations that's moving forward. I believe it's one bus at, at 10 minute headways to shorten that route a little bit. Another option would be to consider a trial run during the holiday period and operating during the, you know, weekend period during the holidays or even midday during holidays. And I think one of the, the good opportunities here is that we know that there, that during high demand periods, the parking within downtown is constrained and it's difficult to park. This would allow individuals to park once and travel to Stanford University, the shopping center area or back to downtown Palo Alto and wouldn't require people to moving their cars back and forth. So that's definitely, we consider to be a shared parking opportunity, a park once opportunity. And while the, it would be a trial run, it would be gauged over a couple month period to see if demand was there for it. And wanted to just finish with the, the West Shuttle. This shuttle was proposed primarily to connect areas of Palo Alto that aren't currently connected with the Palo Alto shuttle as well as to potentially provide an additional, additional mobility to the tech area, which is in the Mountain View area and east of 101. And so I know Jaime or Ruchika will get into the, the public-private partnership that is, that will potentially be needed to fund this shuttle. But what we took a look at was both the schedule and the headways. We made some minor recommendations on that. I know that MV Transportation and the city would, would iron those out, but we just wanted to point those out to them. And then just looking at the routing itself, and again, that goes back to our transit likelihood analysis, that there are some areas in South Palo Alto that, that could be a little bit better served. This also provides a connection to El Camino, California Avenue, the Palo Alto Medical Center and downtown in Caltrain and Stanford University as a one-seat ride from South Palo Alto where we believe the highest transit likelihood to be. One question had been brought up about competition with VTA and their routes 22 and 522. My understanding is that the, is that 22 operates at 12 minute headways and 522 operates at 15 minute headways. So there is quite a lot of bus service along that corridor of, of El Camino and that would be approximately nine buses an hour. So is there a viable market for an additional shuttle service along El Camino? And because it provides that one-seat ride, that it's not just a linear route up and down El Camino that provides a one-seat ride from areas that you would have to transfer and take a VTA bus that may only operate once an hour and then get up to El Camino, there's definitely, we definitely think that there is a demand and that it should be tested out in addition to providing individuals with opportunities to get to Caltrain. And then also there's, there's some school, additional school run ideas for this service. So it does, it does serve a multi-pronged approach, including not, not just getting individuals from Caltrain or the Stanford area to the tech area, but it can serve residents and employees of Palo Alto as well. And I just wanted to also point out that the VTA analysis that we did, the vast majority of boardings for VTA in Palo Alto, those trips end outside of Palo Alto. There is not a whole lot of VTA ridership that's just Palo Alto based. There is some, but this would also serve those individuals and by being a free shuttle and anyone that's price sensitive would then be able to gain additional mobility. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions later, but I wanted to just hand it over to Ruchika to wrap this up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, thank you, Steve. This slide, I want to talk about the onboard rider survey that the city recently conducted over a period of four weeks from mid-September to mid-October. This came out as a recommendation of the independent analysis. And even though we didn't have a lot of time to get more responses, but we received about 116 over a period of four weeks and we tried to gather this information over different periods of time, morning-
Can you pull the mic over to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We tried to conduct the survey during different times of the day, morning, afternoon and later in the evening commute so we get a good sample of different riders who are using the shuttle. And what we found was that the, the report that's attached to the staff, to the staff report is still a draft and we are working on getting the finalized report. But the draft, the key highlights were that Embarcadero shuttle was very popular amongst people who are going to school and for work. Almost 39% of the respondents are using it to get to school and about 33% to go get to work. Crosstown is, as Steve had also pointed it out, is very popular throughout the day and it's, it's, it solves the purpose of shopping and running errands during the midday and, and throughout the day. East Palo Alto, 47% of the respondents are using that to get to, to work. So that was also a very important finding that we hadn't, we've been just learning more about East Palo Alto as the, as it is the newest trap. We typically get complaints about the shuttle performance and, you know, been waiting for the shuttle at a stop for multiple minutes. And our survey found that actually it's 75% of the respondents felt that the shuttle was there before their wait time of 10 minutes. And almost 86% believed that the shuttle came before the 15 minute time period. The characteristics that makes the shuttle program most attractive is it's a free service that's very well received in the community and the, and the perception is they would like to keep it the way it is. Personal security, they feel safe while riding the shuttle, the cleanliness and the courteous drivers. These are all that makes the riders use the Palo Alto shuttle system. I'll let Jaime add a few more highlights.
Thank you both, Ruchika and Steve. I wanted just to note that Steve is actually a Palo Alto native and went through Palo Alto High School, so we're glad to have-
Gunn High School, I apologize.
And with that, before I hand this over to the recommendation slide, I also wanted to just acknowledge and note Mathias Automakers, he's in the back, he just raised his hand. He's our intern from our sister city in the Netherlands, Eskenen. And so, yeah, I do want to thank him for being here, helping us out with this project and note that he actually was the person that did go out, went onto the shuttles and actually interviewed all the respondents that were provided in the attachment D of the staff report. And so again, he did a great job. I just want to, want to thank him for that effort. I do want to also just note that this was a very long presentation. I do apologize, but this was actually for Palo Alto, it was the first really extensive analysis that we've ever done since 1999 of the shuttle program. As Ruchika noted, since 1999, the shuttles have gone through minor tweaks and adjustments over the period. We did in 2011 kind of a community outreach effort to figure out what people were interested in seeing and changes, but this was really our first assessment of, an independent assessment of what our shuttle, how it was performing, ways we could improve it as we felt that it was worth kind of going into detail for you for the presentation. And so, so with that, we do have a series of recommendations which Mayor Shepherd did read out at the start of the presentation. And if it's okay with you, Mayor Shepherd, we did like to ask Commissioner or Chair Michael from the PTC to come up and give you a little bit of an assessment of their discussion as well.
So thank you, Jaime and Mayor Shepherd, members of the council. So this matter came before the PTC for our input. Most, although perhaps not all of our comments were reflected in the staff report that you received, I'm told. We did not vote on a motion or a recommendation to council, but what I can do is, is give you a sense of the, the comments that we heard from the public, the questions that we were most concerned with and then the key points that came out of our discussion, which are all reflected in the verbatim minutes, which I saw earlier today. And if I had more time to prepare, my comments would be shorter. We had, from the public, we had three speakers, all of whom were from the Vista Center for the blind and visually impaired. I don't see them here this evening, but their comments are in our minutes, all of whom addressed the point that there was a, previously a service from the Marguerite VA Shuttle, which has, was decided by Stanford to terminate that, that line. And the, the Vista Center is temporarily relocated over to the Stanford Research Park and there's now, there isn't a public transit option for approximately 2,500 people who make use of the center during the course of the year and they're, they're handicapped and this is of great importance to them. So that's in the verbatim minutes and you can see what they, what they said. The PTC input clustered around a number of areas and, and we had many questions but not, not so many answers. So just go over some of the questions, which you may be asking yourselves. One of the questions was, was to what extent the Palo Alto shuttle routes address gaps in services from other providers such as VTA and Marguerite? So they, these things somehow relate and we didn't understand exactly how those gaps in coverage for residents and visitors were, were addressed. With respect to the, to the survey, which you heard about from staff, which we thought was important as an effort to make decisions based on data and gathering the relevant information, the onboard survey methodology was good. We wondered if this could be augmented or could have been augmented through some sort of online survey or even surveying people who weren't riders. Asking the people who were riders is somewhat selecting for the information that you're going to get. We had a number of commissioners who were probing staff relative to some cost benefit analysis. What was the data regarding the cost of increasing the shuttle services? Different ways of slicing and dicing that. We wanted to know about capacity utilization, which I think was in the report that you heard this evening. We were, some discussion was raised about elasticity of demand for shuttle services as opposed to other ways of getting about the city, including riding bikes, walking cars, whatnot. And so that, it may be some complexity that goes beyond what the, the scope of the project, but maybe of interest longer term. We posed various questions about the shuttle routes. I think a lot of that was addressed in what you heard this evening. Expanded hours, eligibility for, for various grants in terms of the cost to the city. We, we asked what that, what those, those resources might be. And we were, we were impressed that the, that the focus of the intra-city shuttle service primarily addresses commuters and students, seniors to some extent, but we wondered if the, if the, if the benefits or the utilization of the system might extend to, to other stakeholders within the city. So if I can just go to the key points that came out of the commission discussion, we heard very limited public input, so that was primarily from the Vista Center. Many of the commissioners asked questions that you can see are in our minutes, were related to improving the quality of the survey data. And a lot of questions related to the identification of users of the transit services. I think you got that in this evening's report, which hadn't been available for us when we first met. We had questions relating again to the transit costs and the benefits per rider, per route, per shuttle, expanded hours and so forth. We're starting to have discussion, the commission on transportation issues about a concept that one of our colleagues is referring to as mobility, which is not yet well defined, but it's, you know, the preferences for people to move about the city as, as the transit options expand. And then we had some discussion, which are in the minutes, about the, the potential linkage between transit use and land use, or transit use and, and land use. Because if you have increased density, then you're probably, as the downtown area, you're probably going to have more potential riders versus areas where there's less density. And then that was pretty much it. We, we sort of ended with some discussion about the relationship again between the, the routes, the latency and of the Palo Alto shuttle services and the, the VTA regional services and, and what Stanford is doing, all of which seemed to relate to what is the right solution for the city. And I think, I think from our study session last week that we're going to try to provide council with written executive summaries whenever possible. This was on short notice and hopefully it helps focus your discussion. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. As I announced before, let's go ahead and do questions for the study and then we can go out to the public and hear from the public and then come back for our discussion in action. So if anybody has any questions, this is a good time to ask them. Councilmember Price.
Thank you very much for your presentation and the staff work as well as the consultant's work. I appreciate it. This is one question. The shuttles now, do they allow bikes to go on the shuttle or is it just too constrained?
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Yes, all shuttles are equipped to have up to two bicycles on, on the shuttle.
Great, okay. And could you tell me, what is the official carrying capacity of the shuttles?
I'm sorry, you mean the passenger capacity?
Right, including standing room.
It's 32 passengers seated and that includes a wheelchair access seat. I'm not sure what the standing capacity would be, but the seated capacity is 32.
Okay, thank you. The, the issue of seeking potential funding and support regarding the West Shuttle- The issue of seeking potential funding and support regarding the West Shuttle Service, have preliminary inquiries been made of the larger employers at this point?
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Yes, we have had some preliminary discussions with some of the larger employers out in the Shoreline Business Park. We've spoken with both Google and Intuit, who are both kind of located along that Charleston corridor, Charleston Road corridor in Mountain View, in the Bay Shore Business Park.
Great, thank you. Just a point of information, the community bus, VTA, community bus, has the highest ridership of all the community buses in the VTA system. I pointed that out at a Transit Committee meeting, because a lot of people look at Palo Alto and wonder, you know, do we use the buses that are here? And we have some data to prove that. Let me think, the other... In the course of our examination of the shuttle services and the routes, have we had any discussion with the Palo Alto school system, the school district, regarding the current utilization of our services by students in general, or and as it relates to financial support?
We have regular discussions with the school board staff on various issues. The shuttle usage is one of them. We've had discussions regarding, you know, activity level, whenever there is any type of an incident on the shuttle where the incident involves students, you know, our standard protocol is to bring that to the attention of the school administration, where those children will be picked up, and the school gets involved, and disciplinary actions need to take place on the shuttle program. They're kind of our first kind of line of defense to try to address those issues. We have not had any formal discussions with them regarding funding of the shuttle program, but we have kind of raised it to their attention, when they've talked to us about, you know, opportunities to expand the shuttle program.
Great, just a point of information, when I was on the school board, we passed, there was an action taken, that the Palo Alto Unified School District agreed to provide fifty thousand on an annual basis to support the shuttle system. And over time, that just didn't happen any longer in the budget. So I will be bringing this issue up again as we discuss this point. I think it's worth reexamining this. As electeds come and go, sometimes some of these things sort of fall off the table. So, that's my point, and thank you for answering my questions.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First of all, on the trolley idea, it's not really well-fleshed out here, so was the plan to come back to council with, if we initiate the trial service?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf. Yes, I think based off the recommendations that we got from Steve at Fair and Peers, I think those were really good focused recommendations to help, what we thought would be best to shorten the route rather than try and add a second shuttle route. And so we can definitely bring that back to you. I think what we're looking for tonight is, you know, to hear your kind of thoughts on the recommendations that did come out of the report, and we're not asking you guys to give us direction to implement anything tonight, but we would come back to you before...
So what I meant was more like, you know, I think it could be a great thing. I mean, if you bought, for instance, a shuttle that looked like one of those trolley cars in San Francisco, it could be really fun. Are you going to run it on the weekends? I would assume you'd probably do better on Saturday and Sunday, frankly, than during the week, but maybe not. And so I guess those were the questions I was thinking about, is, you know, how do you figure out what the right thing to do is on that? And have you given any thought about that, or are you going to come back with us and say, you know, we've looked at it, and we think it should run, you know, these hours on the weekends, and that we should run these hours during midday maybe? Or, you know, what are the thoughts? Is it only going to run in the sun during the summer? And are we going to expand that during the holiday season? And what goes into all of that? And is that what you're planning on doing?
So the initial staff recommendation was to operate a summertime lunchtime shuttle, based on our experience, and we're looking at where you could get the most ridership and get the most bang for your buck. Another time period that we've offered the staff to consider would be a holiday-type shuttle, to essentially operate. You could either do it midday during the month of December, you could do it on weekends, or you could target, you know, evening periods as well. So I think that there's a number of possibilities to study. I think first and foremost, to ensure that the route itself can run, and there's enough recovery time to be able to operate at a short headway in the route that's being designed, so you can get that bus in operation. I think it just depends on where the city would, the staff would find that the greatest, highest use, the most demand would be, and right now, they're focusing on a trial run during the summer. I think that the next best, or the next option to consider would be a holiday-type shuttle system.
I'm just confused, why lunchtime? That sounded really bizarre to me. Why wouldn't you do it, you know, from, I'll make something up, from eleven o'clock to six, or whatever? Why lunchtime if you want people to actually go back and forth and have that sense?
When we were talking about developing the specific route for the trolley, which, to answer your question, Councilmember Scharf, was a cable-like style type of a car, because of the fact that we were looking at that type of a shuttle, we wanted to make sure we were looking at a season where that would be an attractive type of...
I was asking about when, I asked, you said lunchtime. I said, why would it be during lunchtime? As opposed to like ten to six? That was my question, had nothing to do with the season.
So when we had that discussion with the Stanford Shopping Center folks, and we were kind of asking for their perspective, that's kind of where the lunchtime kind of peak kind of came out, in their clientele at the shopping center, there was an interest in trying to build up the lunchtime crowd. So, you know, it was really based off that recommendation discussion we had with the shopping center that the lunchtime discussion came out. But if we wanted to implement a trial, definitely we could try it for, you know, a month, for seven days a week, and figure out where the biggest ridership is, and then come back with a more solid recommendation about how to retain it.
And on the West Shuttle, what you're asking us to do tonight is to give some direction to go ahead and see what you can get in terms of businesses to contribute, right? So we would then have a decision, because obviously if it was free, I mean, if we weren't paying for it, there's no reason why you wouldn't do it. If it cost us, you know, X number of dollars, we might have second thoughts, right? I mean, that's really what you're asking for tonight.
That's correct, Councilmember Scharf.
And then, so I'm a little thinking about goals on this, and it's a little hard to ask this question, but what were the goals that we were thinking of? What I mean is, there's several goals you could have. You could say to yourself, I want to have a system in which people in Palo Alto no longer need to take their cars around. We could, you know, you could, anywhere in Palo Alto, you could be within ten minutes of a shuttle stop, and we're going to run this all day, seven days a week, and that means you could go everything from downtown to dinner, to lunch, to go do your laundry, to all sorts of things, and have a robust shuttle system. That would be the goal of making it convenient, and you could get around. Did you think about anything like that?
When we were developing the concept routes that were analyzed by Fair and Peers, we really had more of a focused goals. We weren't thinking that broad, as far as just, you know, reducing transportation kind of anywhere in the city. We know that by introducing a system like that, that can happen. We really focused on trying to find kind of the gaps in the system. That's how we were focusing on the routes that were developed, we were looking at where we knew there was demand, and I think that was kind of partially validated by the work that Fair and Peers did. And we're also really kind of basing it off where we were hearing from the community, where they were asking for ridership that didn't exist, whether it be through our shuttle program or through another system. And so that's how we developed the routes that were proposed and analyzed by Fair and Peers.
So when you said from ridership in the community, were you thinking, I mean, how did you develop ridership in the community, where, who did you go talk to? I mean, people on the shuttles, right? As opposed to people who aren't using the shuttles?
When we were developing the routes, it was, we did a community outreach process in two thousand and eleven, so we held a couple of workshops in North and South Palo Alto. We let people come to us, and we kind of asked them, hey, where would you like to see additional service that didn't exist? At that time, we really only had the Embarcadero Shuttle, as well as the Crosstown Shuttle. And to be honest with you, we always just kind of get repetitive emails, just from different people that were interested in seeing expansion of the shuttle into their neighborhood, and that's how we developed the routes. It's kind of that almost four years worth of data since I've been here, and historical that Richard has had, and managing the program, so that's how we developed the routes.
And two last questions. To be successful and bring more ridership in, I'm thinking it needs to be more convenient than a car. I mean, for obviously people don't have cars, and we saw a lot of that, they use the shuttle. So how are you addressing to make this more convenient than a car?
Part of making the route convenient is making sure that we're providing in a service scenario where it doesn't exist, and so I think that's what we're trying to do by the formation of the routes. We've actually been doing some additional analysis, figuring out how can we make it more attractive, and how can we make it more flexible? And we are aware of programs in other communities where during, say, off-peak hours of the day, you can do something like call in a day in advance and say, hey, you know, I can't get to the shuttle stop that's, you know, three blocks from my house, you know, but if we can plan the route ahead of time, we can look at potentially adjusting the route to let the shuttle deviate off of a route, to go and pick up someone that may not be able to get to the route on their own. So that's something that we know, I know they do in Menlo Park, it seems to work well there, but there's challenges, and when a service like that has been implemented in other communities, we're aware of a similar service in San Carlos, they tried to implement that, and it has not been successful, because if we do too much deviation, you hear that, you know, some of the pluses that people liked about our program in the onboard service was the reliability, the predictability of the system. So if we begin to deviate too much off of the route, then we lose that element of the shuttle program, which is successful today, and so it just becomes a balancing act.
And have we considered developing a user-friendly app, so you could always tell where the shuttles are, and you can know where they're coming and when they're arriving?
We have not done that. That is something that I think that would probably very well receive by the Palo Alto community.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
A few questions. Let me start out with metrics, since the one that you keep using of boardings per revenue mile isn't clear to me, maybe it is to others, but a simpler one for me would be, what's the gross, what's the total number of ridership per year on a particular route? And what does it cost us? And divide those numbers, and I get a cost per ride. I'm sure you've got those numbers, so can you share them with us, or does it require some work?
Yeah, so there is a whole slew of metrics that you can use, Councilmember Klein, to analyze transit performance, so looking at boardings per revenue hour. As long as you have some sort of constant that you're actually, you know, dividing by, then you can assess it compared to other systems and other routes. So, boardings per revenue mile, boardings per revenue hour are two metrics. Also, cost per boarding, you know, either how much it costs to serve each rider, and you can subtract that from the fare box that you get for each rider, but this system is free, so essentially the cost per boarding is actually what the total cost is, there's no fare box recovery. And then you can do cost per revenue hour, which we have, and I'm trying to see if we actually have the cost per boarding. I can probably calculate that for you very quickly, just cost per boarding overall. But what we were trying to show was that the overall performance of the Crosstown route, especially the Crosstown route, is quite good for a community-based route. Obviously, it can be improved, and we're looking at ways to improve that and serve additional riders, but the performance is pretty good. Another system that we had looked at, that we had done analysis for and planned routes for, was down in Southern California, in Irvine, another first-mile-last-mile system, and that overall was performing actually a lot, lot worse than the Palo Alto route. Just want to kind of give a, you know, bookend that these routes are actually performing quite well.
I appreciate that, but I would really like to see the cost per boarding, as you phrase it. And the reason for that is, that translates into something that I think we can all relate to, whereas boardings per revenue mile seems to me to be comparing only within the small universe of other systems. And so, for example, it's possible that all of these systems are not economical, and we can't see that, at least I can't see it, until I get a cost per boarding. In other words, if everybody is at fifty to a hundred dollars a, per boarding, they all make, we may look good comparatively, but on a more, taking a broader view of it, I think I'd have to say, wow, that's way too much. We might be better off employing somebody to go out and pick up each rider on a... Which does lead me to my next question. I don't see any reference in here to the new systems that are developing, such as Uber. And in your experience, does that play into this at all?
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Very quickly, on your first point, I did want to note that, you know, we do plan on returning to the council, depending on your actions tonight, you know, for some of the next steps, and we can definitely provide some of that additional metrics that you're asking for, that is no problem. We have some of them, just not with us tonight. You know, when it comes to kind of growing kind of transportation trends, such as things like the use of Uber, or Lyft, or other type of systems, it's a change. I mean, to me, I'm always kind of preaching to people that how transportation is working in communities is really changing because of the millennial generation, and people don't buy as many cars as they did in the past, people have changed their habits. A lot of people that I know that are, you know, from different generations, don't drive their car, they just kind of jump on an app and get Lyft, and it's something that I think we need to respond to. We've had a lot of internal discussions in the city so far that we haven't brought to you in the past, but we've talked about things like developing, you know, stations around the city where people can kind of meet and kind of pick up rides, just in a general neighborhood, you know, things like a transit kind of station that you would see along El Camino Real, but, you know, on Meadow, or on another street in Crescent Park, to just to give people places where they can kind of go and meet and get their Lyft, so they're not maybe going to their home. I think that we have to kind of still see how we're going to address that trend, but I think those internal discussions we have are giving us a little bit of a step forward.
Okay, I think we'd really want to see that before we, someplace, not too much further down the line as to what the impact is. I should have also mentioned the car rental ones, the spaces we've now set aside, Zipcar, thank you guys. Okay, have we had any discussions with VTA about this? And let me put it in a little different way. You've talked about how much service there is along El Camino, and how they propose what we're calling the West Route, or we'll come back to that naming in just a minute. Is there a risk here that the route that Palo Alto adopts, as you're suggesting here, is a success and siphons off passengers from VTA, and VTA says that their routes to twenty-two, et cetera, are no longer viable for that reason?
See, I'll shut that off, Steve, and I'll have you kind of provide some additional perspective. When we were developing the concept of the West Route, it was actually done several months ago, you know, when we were doing the first phase of the shuttle program expansion, when we released an RFP to kind of get some cost for what the different routes might cost the city. We actually shared all of those routes really early on during the development of the RFP with the VTA, we shared them with Samtrans, we shared them with Stanford Marguerite, and we really went out of our way to make sure that we weren't going to be introducing any type of a route that would be a competition to the existing services. And so, you know, the VTA did have a lot of discussions with us about, you know, the potential routes for the West Shuttle, and, you know, there's always going to be a little bit of an overlap along some routes. That always impacts, you know, fundability from the perspective of can you get grants to fund a route? But the VTA, you know, did tell us, hey, they didn't see a specific competition with the West Route and the existing routes on El Camino Real, because, you know, the route is coming from a different origin, and even though there's some kind of overlap in the destinations along the way, you know, the proposed West Route was trying to get to the Stanford Shopping Center, and to the Medical Center, which the VTA routes weren't doing. And so, you know, there's some overlap along the middle, but the origin destinations where people are predominantly getting picked up are off of that El Camino Real, so from the VTA's perspective, they felt that would be okay.
Those are all nice words, but is VTA willing to commit that for some period of time, that if we instituted this route, they would continue with the twenty-two route and with five-twenty-two, and not take into account any losses in ridership to the Palo Alto free route?
You know, we didn't have that specific discussion with the VTA, Councilmember Klein, but we can do so, and Steve, did you want to add anything else in?
I'd be happy to add a few things on that. So with VTA implementing their El Camino BRT project, my understanding is they will always continue to operate to the Palo Alto Caltrain Station, and they will continue to have a local service to twenty-two as an overlay to the BRT service, once the five-twenty-two converts to the BRT service. And I just pulled up something that I had done before the Planning Commission hearing. I'd received some ridership by stop from VTA along El Camino, and looked at both the twenty-two and the five-twenty-two, and I think I alluded to this briefly in my presentation. But what I found, and by no means is this final and exact, but the ridership that I analyzed, that they provided me with, I found that of all the boardings within the city of Palo Alto, and that's a boarding and a delighting, so someone getting on and off in the city of Palo Alto, nineteen percent of the ridership on twenty-two was, both had a boarding and a delighting in Palo Alto, and only nine percent for five-twenty-two. So the vast majority of the riders that are traveling in Palo Alto are coming from a destination outside Palo Alto. So it's not an exact science, but there's, I think there's definitely demand for a Palo Alto service to capture some of that unmet demand. And obviously, with a free shuttle service, there may be more latent demand there as well. So I think that it's definitely worth, definitely worth looking at very closely, and also with the... the additional, kind of the leg of the service that's coming up and down Charleston and providing that one-seat ride versus a transfer can also attract greater ridership along El Camino. And Commissioner Klein, I just wanted to, I just wanted to give you one, I just calculated it, the, based on the 2012, 2013 ridership, we're looking at about $1.85 a boarding for the crosstown route. And that's, that's actually, that's, that's really, that's really efficient.
$1.85?
$1.85.
Thank you very much for that. My last question is, give me some more detail as to what discussions, I mean, this is probably to you, what discussions we've had with large companies in Mountain View. By the way, by, when we use West Bay Shore, that's a very confusing name. I understand that Mountain View probably thinks that everything on the bay side of 101 is north of 101. Is that correct? And therefore, this is now west and West Bay Shore, of course, to us means something else.
Yes, you're correct, Councilmember Klein. I made an error and I should have said the Shoreline Business Park in Mountain View.
I think that ought to be better so people don't get all confused. Let me go back to the more important question. You, you talked about Intuit and maybe some other companies, but have any of them really indicated that they're willing to pay money?
I would say that the discussions we've had, there's been a lot of positive support towards trying to establish a partnership with Palo Alto, with some of the larger companies. I think that they, the employers that we've spoken to want to know that there's some policy support, you know, from the city council to want to establish a partnership before we can get too far into any type of negotiation. We also felt it was appropriate to come to you, you know, to really get your permission to have a real formal discussion with anybody. But yes, I would think it's safe to say that some of the employers that we've spoken to are definitely willing to come to the table to help us out. There would actually be likely to be a transfer of existing private shuttles that are servicing some of the larger employers towards this type of a system. And that is one of the reasons why, you know, we, we wanted to come to you really early on to get some more info from you on that.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Niss?
So picking up where Councilmember Klein left off, and let me ask three questions in a row. Are we in essence running a school bus? Secondly, why isn't VTA contributing some more money to us? It was, that was the plan in 99 when it first got started, was to go to VTA because we felt our service was lousy in Palo Alto. It was no question. And the last one is, if I'm taking the train, I see any number of shuttles meeting the train all along the way, particularly in San Carlos, but they're all private companies. So those private companies are more than willing to pay something. And I would certainly hesitate on any west, any connection into Mountain View without getting that kind of support first, which I think you could get. So can you address those three areas?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Niss. On the issue of, first of all, on this, I'll be running a school shuttle, I think that we have very widespread demand. Rujic has shared with you some of the numbers. You know, we were seeing about a 30% demand on some of the shuttles, you know, for use by students. You know, that's, that's a high number, but it's a good number. I mean, our shuttle, we have a shuttle that is providing a benefit to a lot of people and a lot of people have expressed, you know, that that shuttle does serve their students and help them kind of get to and from school. But so I would say, no, we're not running a school shuttle, you know, but we have a well-balanced kind of demanded shuttle today.
But, but, Jaime, let me just stop you there for a minute because we do have a number of, certainly junior high and high school age kids that are riding it. And I remember exactly what Councilmember Price said. There was a commitment of $50,000. And as she has mentioned, that tends to slip away with time. I would think that would be a rational and reasonable request. So just a question.
You know, no, thank you, Vice Mayor Niss. It is a good question and I think that it is a really good topic for us to bring back to the school board, potentially through the City School Traffic Safety Liaison Committee can have that discussion. And that's an area where I think that the council could provide us a little bit of leadership, you know, to help us, you know, bring that issue back. But we can definitely also, from the staff perspective, provide that question and response as well. From the issue of the VTA funding, you know, to my knowledge, VTA has not funded this program historically. There are definitely grant programs that have been available and that may have been the attention historically where some of the funding from the VTA could come from. There is what's called the, historically what's called the VTA Program Manager 40% Fund. And that was where cities could, you know, submit a grant proposal to help fund a line. A lot of that money still comes from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And unfortunately for us, you know, there, one, cannot be any overlap at all with any type of an existing route. So when we talk about the program like, like the West Shuttle, for example, just to use it as an example, you know, because there is an overlap just from the standpoint of a route along a program like El Camino, or even, even within a half mile to one mile radius of that route, that automatically disqualifies that route from grant funding. And it is a challenge for us with the Embarcadero Shuttle. That route is actually at jeopardy by the Joint Powers Board at Samtrans because of the connections or similarity along El Camino Real between Embarcadero and the Caltrain Station.
But you might look at it further because the, what happened then was not looking for grants, it was looking for some support. And 99 was a lot like it is today. There was, you know, a huge amount of business, there was explosion of population and so forth going on in Palo Alto. And that's why that shuttle began. It was really necessary. And we really thought VTA might, might be willing to put something into the pot. There's, there's really no lever to get them to do that other than, in some ways, goodwill. So, but then the last one with the businesses.
So, I'm sorry, can you find me the question again, Vice Mayor Niss, on your question?
Because we see the shuttles going back and forth, you know, whether it's the big Google buses going up and down the highways. But whenever I take the train, I'll look at Adina because I know she sees this too, there are many shuttles from many different companies that are picking people up at the train station. So if we're talking about a shuttle that would go in that direction, which certainly serves their purpose as well, especially if it goes to Caltrain, it would seem that getting the money upfront might be a good way to do that shuttle if we are actually going to do it.
Thank you for the reiteration, Vice Mayor Niss. Yes, definitely, that is the point. And actually, if you look at the way the West Route has been laid out, we purposely didn't add stops in some locations where we thought that they would be good routes because, you know, we were going under the notion that, you know, sponsor a stop and we'll give you a stop. We just want to give it to people. And that is one way in which we achieve your goal, where we try to get money upfront to establish the route. And we do think that there is a lot of private sector interest in doing something like that.
So, and other than Emeryville, which you, which you looked at and perhaps one other city, did you find any close by cities to us, you know, within a 10-mile radius or so that are actually using shuttles that they pay for? Not, not a shuttle in general, but a city-sponsored, city-paid-for shuttle?
Vice Mayor Niss, absolutely. There's a number of shuttles along the peninsula. Menlo Park has a shuttle. Daly City has a community-based shuttle. A lot of them are first mile, last mile shuttles from the Caltrain Station. So either jointly funded by Caltrain, also by BART and a CCAG or other, other agencies. And then additionally, there's a lot of the private shuttle operations. But the, one of the benefits of the, of a publicly funded shuttle is that it can go to multiple locations and not just specifically to one employer. And there are, there are also a number of other community shuttles that I probably can't think of right now. But Burlingame has a shuttle. There's sometimes, there's sometimes senior shopping shuttles, community-based shuttles, but each city operates somewhat differently, but, but a number of the cities on the peninsula do operate community-based shuttles.
I kept it in the form of a question because that's what we're doing, but I wondered why you didn't compare us to some of those other cities that I did know have the shuttles. So Emeryville was interesting, but we, we mentioned previously the cost-benefit analysis. I think it would have been helpful to know how other cities are doing this. Are they getting money from any other sources? Are there some grants that they have gotten? I think there was more that we could have included about what the best practices are around us. There are lots more questions, but I think, let's move on.
Vice, Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One word seemed to be missing from the report, Marguerite. We have next door to us a free shuttle system that carries thousands of people per day, interconnects with us? What, why, why is that a missing element?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. You know, I would say, I don't think, obviously, we weren't ignoring the Stanford Marguerite program. They were also, again, one of the partners that we outreach to as we were evaluating our program, as we were considering the development of routes over the past several months. They were somebody that we held meetings with to figure out that we weren't going to, one, compete with them. We actually, to be honest with you, we encouraged them initially to be a responder to our RFP that we did in the spring. We were actually hoping that it was a way for us to kind of build a partnership with Stanford. Stanford did tell us that they were aware of our RFP. They, they chose, made a business decision to not try and partner with the city of Palo Alto for the shuttle program. And so as a result of that, you know, they, the partnership didn't materialize. Do you want to add anything else, Steve, regarding your transit likelihood analysis?
Oh, I just want to say with the, with the Marguerite Shuttle, you know, that's a very, very successful first mile, last mile solution from the Palato Caltrain Station and other areas, primarily because a lot of the riders there are captive riders, they're coming in by train. And so that is a success to look at and to build off of. And the Embarcadero Shuttle provides a similar type of service to a lot of the Marguerite routes. The crosstown itself is a different type, it's a community-based shuttle. But again, we wouldn't ignore Marguerite. It is a very, very successful system and Stanford has done a very good job of mitigating a lot of their traffic and parking impacts by providing that shuttle service.
Yeah, from Caltrain Station to Stanford, to Business Park, California Avenue, I mean, they intersect with us and anything we create should take advantage of, of that system so close to us. Second question, I was struck in the survey you did, the number that jumped out at me is that 85% of the ridership are regular riders, multiple times per week. Now, that's striking because the other number that's important in there is the 40%. You figure an elasticity, if you just increase timing, you can increase ridership by between 40 and 60%. Now, if the current ridership is such an intensive group, presumably you want to reach outside of that intensive group. So what's the connection between who uses it now and that elasticity of 40%?
Councilmember Schmidt, I'll just take that question. So I think with, without have, without truly having a clear understanding of exactly who your riders are, I wouldn't want to opine on something that don't have exact data on. The research that, that we have and it's national research from different systems, it's more of, of kind of a barometer, looking at any, you know, an increase between 30%, 60%. The average around 40, 50% increase with frequency. So we can look at, at frequency, which are headways. We can look at if you increase the cost, decrease the cost, although that's not an option here since we, the Palo Alto Shuttle doesn't charge a fee. But I think those are great questions, but they're likely not be able to answer it with, with more national research. One thing I wanted to point out, though, looking at the data from the shuttle survey, was that 60% of riders are four-plus days a week. So there's still 40% of folks that are riding, you know, less than, less than five days a week. And so be able to capture their trips a bit more and hopefully that there is latent demand out there that if, if frequency is increased, it will convince individuals to make that trip via, via shuttle and not have to drive, or they're just not making that trip right now.
A follow-up question on the 40%. That was done, a survey of surveys, done for San Francisco. So I assume you're looking, as you say, at national models. But the dramatic thing about transit use is it changes quite dramatically with densities. And Palo Alto's on the lower end of densities and on the lower end of size. So is that 40% take into account Palo Alto's unique position in size and density?
You know, I have to answer that honestly. And as far as community-based systems like we, like there is in Palo Alto, there is very little research about this exact unique context. And, you know, there's very little areas like Palo Alto. The, the research that we have in the report, actually I have a Transit Cooperative Research Program report in my bag that has, that has surveyed a whole bunch of different systems, so not just San Francisco. And there's general consensus on bus versus commuter rail versus light rail frequency or elasticities. And so just trying to give you a, a general idea of what that could be. I think the other challenge, you know, in Palo Alto as far as, you know, increasing density obviously increases transit ridership, but the cost of parking is also a big, big factor in how people choose, choose their mode of access. So that, that is definitely one challenge that, that we see as far as providing free parking. That, that's another challenge, including density, just including, you know, incomes and access to automobiles. So there's a multi, there's a number of variables to consider when we're trying to increase ridership. But I think that the staff has done a great job with, you know, looking at where the need is and serving those individuals that, that have the most need. That's both from a captive standpoint, in terms of people getting off the train and they don't have a mode of access to get to, to work other than taking the bus. They don't have a car. Or those individuals that don't own cars can't drive, such as some seniors or students. So I think they've done a great job with capturing those markets. And I think the big challenge is for those individuals that can drive and do drive frequently, how to convince them to, maybe, you know, not take transit every day, but how they could replace some other trips with transit.
All right, is that it? Okay. Councilmember Holman?
Well, there have been some very good questions asked. So looking at the, at the map that was slide eight, it indicates that basically the, as I read it anyway, the Research Park and Barron Park don't seem to be high likelihood users. And yet, the Research Park is very, very, very low in terms of using transit. And we hear, or at least I hear fairly often from people who live in Barron Park that, gee, there's not really much in the way of shuttle service that serves us. And the other thing that we, I'm sure all hear a lot, is that a lot of the Barron Park population goes to Mountain View and Los Altos for their retail purchases because it's closer for them. And there's no place to park downtown. And it's hard to get across town. So how would staff respond to all of those in terms of this ranking that seems to say that those are low likelihood areas of town to utilize a shuttle? And I did notice, of course, in the staff report, you talk about not wanting to take left turns across the railroad tracks, but, you know, it's a part of town that's on the left, on the east side, excuse me, the west side of the railroad tracks. So it just, it is what it is, right?
So I just wanted to find a couple of thoughts, but I definitely want Steve to provide you some more like insight regarding the assessment that Ferrin Peers did. We have heard, you know, a lot of interest from residents in the Barron Park neighborhood to try and provide some type of a, of a connection. That was, again, one of the reasons why we proposed a stop at Matadaro as part of the West Shuttle Route. From the standpoint of the Mountain View connection, you know, we, we were really trying to be creative and nimble in the ways in which we came to you with these proposals to expand the shuttle program. Some, some of them, you know, we've tried to develop some kind of concepts really early on for. We've tried to partner with Mountain View, just so you know. We've actually asked Mountain View, hey, let's, let's pull our resources together and see what our policymakers think about a combined shuttle program. There's, hasn't been an interest, an interest in that by the Mountain View staff. We don't know why. But, you know, we proposed a similar concept to East Palo Alto and they jumped on the opportunity. That's why you saw the proposal that you approved earlier in June for the expansion of that shuttle program. Menlo Park has expressed an interest in trying to work with us as well. So I think we're trying to find ways to expand those resources, but in Mountain View, there just hasn't been an interest so far, but we think it is, might be a missed opportunity.
Sure. And let me speak to the transit likelihood. And I just want to start off by saying, by no means is this, is this the, the perfect picture of what transit demand could be in the city of Palo Alto. We did make some assumptions and we looked at a composite of six different variables and employment density was one of them. I would, I would guess that in the, you know, Research Park area, while you do have a lot of business, employment density is what we looked at. And so I'm not exactly sure what the FARs are out there, but there's probably a lot of parking. And so the density out there is probably a lot less than it is on California Avenue as far as employment or in downtown Palo Alto. So I think that's just one thing to consider. So by no means would, would that be an area that would not have any transit demand. I know that there's a lot of VTA service that, that goes there from the Caltrain Station right now. But we did want to just take a look and, and But we did want to just take a look and, and look at the area, look at the markets that we thought were the most conducive for transit. And that, that did include senior population and zero-car households. So, we would be, we'd be happy to take another look, but another slice of it. We have, we take the census data and do it by census block groups. And so, we can, we can slice it a whole bunch of different ways. And this was, this was just one take that we had as far as what we thought the transit likelihood would be in Palo Alto.
I would appreciate more information along those lines. And again, cooperative effort with Stanford because of the Caltrain station that you mentioned at California Avenue. And also, how this might help alleviate some of the traffic, if we could expand some kind of service from the Caltrain station or from even the university station, alleviate some of the traffic on Page Mall and Rasidero, which are not good. I mean, Page Mall's a nightmare in the morning. So, anything we could do to alleviate that would be a big benefit in a broad way. I can sort of guess to make why Mountain View might not be as eager to participate in a joint program as, as other communities. There was a comment made about people not wanting to necessarily take the train, for instance, when you have free parking. But we really, if people are coming, talking about particularly over the holidays, but even other times, we don't really have free parking. If you're going to stay for a long time, a parking ticket is not free. So, we don't have free parking for extended stay unless you're going to buy an all-day, you know, permit. And so, it's, you know, another way to promote, right? I've often wondered why we don't do more coordination with, with Caltrain about the holiday season, getting people to downtown or Stanford Shopping Center, and even validate a Caltrain ticket in some fashion or other, to get people to not bring their car to Palo Alto at all and be able to spend the day, you know, on the shuttles and even have shuttles circulating around downtown and around the shopping centers. So, it's more like a circulating ride and not just a to and from, not just a destination point to destination point. Because Stanford Shopping Center's large, downtown is large enough that if you're, you know, wielding packages or whatever over the holidays, it's, point, point A to point B is not necessarily the kind of service that might serve the communities, the community members the best, and certainly visitors maybe not the best either. So, I don't know if you looked into that at all or not, but that's something I'd be interested in and have been for a long time. The trolley to, having to go along with that, the trolley that goes to Stanford. Say more about why Stanford was more interested in a noontime shuttle. Would you repeat what you were saying earlier and maybe elucidate that a little bit more?
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. So, when we were developing that concept of the noontime shuttle for the downtown to Stanford Shopping Center, we did outreach to the Simon Group, who operates and maintains the Stanford Shopping Center. So, that, that was just a target time that they had noticed and interest in. It was also an interesting area. We started, and then we talked about the schedule and kind of what might make sense. That's just the way that the discussion kind of went. I do think that there's a lot of opportunity to, again, look at an expansion of hours, an expansion of route and days. It's a really early on discussion still, and so, I think we'd definitely come back after having some more discussions with them about that concept.
So, one thing, and say, one thing I'd be interested in about that, because the way I heard it, both times, is perhaps, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, but perhaps they would like to have more visitorship around the lunchtime. But in Palo Alto, it's downtown is very, very, very busy, shouldn't be doing that, very busy during the down, the lunchtime hour. So, I just want us to be careful of not siphoning off business downtown to the Stanford Shopping Center. You know, there's enough for everybody, but just want to make sure we're not siphoning off from our downtown businesses in that lunchtime mode. So, just be aware of that. So, I guess I'm also interested in a longer term for that, too, not just lunchtime and being aware of that one thing. The shuttles, one of the frustrations, and somebody mentioned something about an app, I think it may have been Councilwoman Klein, I don't remember for sure. Was that, oh, you don't need to glare. It was Councilmember Scharf who mentioned that. I would think that would be something that would be helpful. One of the frustrations that I've had and that other people have had, too, that's been stated, is that the promotion and mapping and scheduling, availability and clarity has not been good. I mean, ridership could be, I think, higher. And this has been going on for a long time. Ridership, I could think, would be a lot higher if we had improved mapping and scheduling. You know, the Caltrain schedules are very easy to read. Palo Alto shuttle schedules are not very easy to read in terms of predicting where one's going to go. Jim, did you have something to say?
Well, no, I was just going to say, my own experience is that's pretty typical on almost any bus system, wherever you are. And I think that's one of the reasons you see these high numbers of riders who are frequent riders, the same reason of the app, knowing the schedule, knowing how the system works, and then being able to organize your life in a routine way around it is very different than somebody just saying, hey, I think I'll just go hop on that shuttle and go over to Stanford and go shopping. I mean, it's pretty hard to do that.
I think San Francisco has pretty easy signage, though, for buses, doesn't it?
Really? We're going to compare ourselves to Muni? Okay, well, let's talk to the board of supervisors about that.
It's more rhetorical question, but, let's see. Yeah, filling the gaps provided by other providers, that is one of the questions that the Planning Commission had. I think it's a very good question. And then, just want to support with my last comment here, I think, is the, is the school district funding. And the $50,000 number is a years-old number, so I think there ought to be at least an inflation rate added to that. It is, well, it's not a school shuttle. It is, you know, a good service that we provide to the schools. And we provide a good number of services to the schools, and some of them are quite appropriate, and some of them are like, it should be more of a shared opportunity in cost. So, I would support, I would support that exploration indeed. Thank you very much. Councilmember Burt.
Maybe a few things on, questions on our marketing. Some of my colleagues have touched on this, but I think that, I'd like to know on this, different parts of marketing, and it's, I guess it's marketing, the information on availability of the system. There's a question about apps, and I know other cities, there are a lot of apps on real-time bus services. Are we aware of those existing apps, and can they just be used as templates and, and be brought on board here? And also, within that, would we be looking at integrating other transit in that app?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. When we released the RFP for the shuttle service that brought on MB Transportation in July, we actually had a requirement in that RFP scope that they had to provide GPS tracking on all of the shuttles and then develop an app that would allow for that, for the public to be able to view and track those vehicles. They are still in the process of developing that application. I will say, it's not a very good one. It's to the point where we just didn't feel it was worth marketing it because, I mean, to actually get to the map and figure out where the shuttle is, it was just so cumbersome. You have to drill down several kind of steps on an app. It just, it wasn't a usable, customer-friendly service type of application. So, we've expressed a lot of concerns to MB Transportation along that regard, and they are in the process of revamping the entire application, so.
How about utilizing other existing apps that are, exist in other cities?
Yeah, I would just add that I thought, I thought it was a good idea for us is to sort of bundle this when we went out. But at the same time, if we've got a provider whose first line of business is something other than app development, there's either existing apps or our own ability to just go out to some third party who's really, you know, kind of has an intuitive customer sense. And I think the suggestion about thinking about how we link it or have the capacity to link it to other transportation networks, obviously, is going to be real important to the user.
Yeah. And when we had the Palo Alto App Challenge, we didn't have any apps specifically for this, but we had a lot more good apps than we adopted, so, okay. And I know that we've made some progress on installing benches, and I don't know whether we have any covered benches yet. Have we looked at whether we have benches at the highest boarding locations and including transfer locations with VTA buses or otherwise?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. Yes, we do have, we did install multiple benches over the last several months. But in terms of the covered shelters, no, we did not install any new ones. We do have shared locations with the VTA stops, and there are many places along Embarcadero Route and the crosstown shuttle route where we have the covered shelters that we share with VTA.
Okay, so, aside from the locations where we have shared boarding stations with VTA, have we identified a list of our highest boarding locations?
That is one of the things that we're working with MB Transit now. We do, they do a good job of giving us kind of like, kind of daily kind of boarding information. That's how we're able to calculate a lot of the matrices or metrics that Steve developed. But what we haven't really gotten from them in the past, but that we've asked for now, since they started their contract in July, is to give us, you know, boarding and deboarding specifics by location. That's something that we're going to get new. And so, once, I think, over the next year, as we begin to get that stop-specific-type boarding information, then we'll be able to do more focused things like what you're suggesting, Councilmember Burt, with like, things like shelters.
Okay. And that, that real data will be valuable. I suspect that we already, from if we were to ask the bus drivers where they're getting most of the boardings, we could get a pretty good sense of that, even if it's not good quantitative data. And we'd know where we ought to put our emphasis. On the shared costs, some of my colleagues have brought this up, on the Shoreline and PAUSD. But we also have the Research Park, and they have big employers out there with thousands of employees. I got to say, I'm, I guess I'd like to ask, I'm still can't understand the methodology that was used to determine that the Research Park is a low opportunity for the transit use. Can you briefly say how you came up with that conclusion?
Yeah, Councilmember, absolutely. So, it was actually a composite of six different variables. And so, we looked at senior, senior population, zero-car households, youth population, employment density, population density, as well as intersection density. So, downtown Palo Alto, which has more closely spaced blocks and more of a grid system, would rank higher than in an area such as the Research Park, which has fewer connections and more, more large streets. Again, it's, it's, it's one snapshot of how we were looking at the likelihood. So, again, the Research Park, there's a lot of employment out there, although it is a little more dispersed.
Well, let me, let me offer maybe something that was missed, and that is, think of the Research Park as nodes. There are major employers with thousands of employees at specific locations in the Research Park. And if you put an average over the entire Research Park, you may see a different density pattern than if you think of them, those major employers as nodes. So, I'll just leave that briefly. And then, with VTA, and the last time we had had this discussion before us, I raised several questions. One is whether we're doing any shared marketing with VTA. They don't market us, we don't market them. Has there been any discussion with them about sharing the marketing with them?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. Around the cost of sharing the marketing of our shuttle program, we haven't had that discussion with the VTA. I did want to know, and Richika reminded me, that we do obviously market our shuttle route along the Google Maps, Yahoo Maps, and so, those routes are available. So, if someone goes online, you know, just wants to do like a transit tracker, you know, the city of Palo Alto shuttle program does, routes do show up for them.
Okay. And so, it's also mentioned that one of the reasons why we might have the West Shuttle is because ours is free and the VTA charges $3. And that goes to one of my other points that I raised the last time we had this discussion, and that is, VTA doesn't practice any zone-based pricing like Caltrain does. And so, it's the same price to take 22 from Calav to, to, to university as it is from San Jose to university. Have we had any follow-up discussions with VTA about an interest in zone-based pricing?
We did actually have a discussion with the VTA regarding kind of just the general just approach towards cost. You know, they didn't give us any hints towards, they're moving towards zone pricing in the near term. That's something that they're struggling with, you know, on their side regarding just trying to keep the cost of the system attractive for them. And so, you know, introducing a tier-type pricing or a zone-type pricing didn't seem to kind of, kind of be in line with the discussions they've been having, if they've been receiving from their own kind of, kind of onboard kind of marketing surveys. And so, that was something that came up.
Yeah. Maybe they're not getting that feedback because a lot of people in Palo Alto aren't using those frequent headways as a shuttle because it costs $3 to travel a mile. So, there's a little chicken and egg problem there. Okay. Finally, on the ECO Pass, I had asked about the pricing structure where it's, they have 1 to 99 as one tier and 100 to 3,000 as the next tier, and over 3,000 as the largest tier. And, and the medium and larger tiers, it's really inexpensive. Have we had discussions with them about establishing more gradations in their tiering structure?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. We, we did actually have discussions with the VTA regarding kind of, just in general, how their ECO Pass system worked. I don't know if Richika has the cost information to give it to you, you know.
I know the cost structure, so I don't need that. But I just want to know whether, what their responses have been.
So, in our discussions with the VTA, you know, the ECO Pass system is very similar for the council members and the people at home that aren't familiar with it, it's very similar to the Caltrain GoPass program. An entity or organization can, can enter into an agreement with the VTA to provide an ECO Pass, you know, towards every employee within that employment or entity that is establishing a partnership with the VTA. We, we didn't have a larger discussion around, you know, can we do one for like a citywide ECO Pass, you know, but definitely when development projects have been coming forward to us, you know, that are looking at kind of transportation demand management kind of strategies, it is, it is a program that we encourage them to use.
Did we ask them specifically whether they would be willing to establish more tiers in their ECO Pass?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Could I ask another, just follow-up on that? So, it might be also possible to have more intermediate tiers if we could be allowed to sort of bundle them geographic as a city.
Exactly.
So, we have 3,000, but we've got seven different participants.
The highest tier amounts to $1.50 per month per employee, or if they are residents, per resident. And we really haven't looked at that. Okay. And then, when we look at boarding data, are we intending to look at a difference of a rainy day versus a fair-weather day? Because a lot of people will take a bus that otherwise might ride their bikes or walk. On a rainy day, they'll take the bus. Do we have any intention to make that distinction?
Do you want to answer that question?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. I do have the data for the first six months of the year. This is a monthly data. This is the monthly boarding data, the ridership data. And as you can see, the month of June, the crosstown school route is zero. So, the school was not in session, so it was, so that's why the ridership number is low for that month. For now, I don't have a monthly distribution for the entire fiscal year, but I can provide, what I do have is a fiscal year data for each, for each fiscal year over the last several years. But I'll be happy to provide more breakdown of each month over the last three months.
And this last year was an unusual one where we didn't have much rain. Okay, final question. Regarding this West Shuttle, I know that we have, I had brought up the question about Alma, which has no bus coverage at all, and a lot of our population running along Alma, whereas El Camino has heavy bus coverage. We do, would have a problem, I understand, with stops along Alma. We would have a problem, I understand, with stops along Alma. But what level of evaluation have we looked at Alma coverage on the West Shuttle versus El Camino?
Up here on the graphic is a graph of the proposed West Route, shown predominantly in red. Again, when we were looking at the development of this route, we did have a discussion internally and kind of with the VTA, the people about kind of the routes. And Alma was a challenging route for us, you know, for a few reasons. One is the limited right-of-way, limited locations to actually build a stop without conflicting with the traffic that's behind the shuttle itself. We also were really concerned from the standpoint of safety about introducing a shuttle route that would turn left over the Caltrain tracks. It happens a lot along Caltrain, sorry, along Alma Street, where when the train preemption does come in, there's always some car that was turning left that gets stopped right in front of the gate. And we were a little concerned that if the shuttle somehow had to turn left from Alma, say, northbound, kind of towards, over the tracks, towards the El Camino route area, that that shuttle would get stuck behind that gate and kind of then protrude and block traffic on Alma. So geometrically, we were really constrained with trying to do anything on Alma Street.
Well, I'll just say that I wasn't envisioning it crossing the tracks other than, say, at Oregon. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Berman?
So a lot of good questions have been asked and answered. I'll just have one kind of quick question, which is, we've talked a lot about how different routes or increased headwinds. Headwinds, is that what we call them? Headways? Headways. Sounded wrong. You know, might increase ridership. And we've talked, and different council members have asked, you know, different specific questions about, you know, marketing questions they had. But did you guys, and it might not, it wouldn't fall so much under the study, but did you do any sort of analysis to try to identify additional marketing techniques that could be used to identify riders that, potential riders that might take advantage of even existing shuttle service, just don't know about it?
We have been looking at like tech companies that provide like marketing services for their shuttles. A lot of new applications that, you know, if you partner with them and you just pay a fee, they can add your shuttle to their program. And then, you know, people can kind of jump on and kind of see where things are. So we're kind of looking at that. It's something that we started kind of over the last couple of months. And I think it's something that we can return to you guys, you know, later on in the year, whenever we look to an actual formal expansion of the program.
Great. And I think, you know, as you guys develop more data, including, you know, some of the data that Councilmember Bird was talking about, about specifically where people get on and get off, you know, maybe get an idea for specifically what establishments, or at least what areas, you know, are a lot of people getting off at Midtown, or a lot of people, you know, Downtown's probably too big of a geographic area to be very helpful. But trying to narrow down what in particular people are using it for. Even things like advertising on Caltrain on their website could be an idea. You know, identifying websites where, or Google searches that folks might use, and, you know, taking advantage of, you know, some of those opportunities. So definitely something to consider, which goes along with the concerns that folks were talking about, about there's already a lot of repeat customers on the shuttle. So how do we identify new customers, I think should be a big focus. I'll save some other comments for later. Thanks.
I guess my primary question is to take a look at who needs to get somewhere during the day. And we have something that's very reliable, and that is the school bell schedule. I know that we have a restriction on Arastodaro Road that we can't cannibalize the VTA bus in service. But when I look at the load capacity of 32 seats, possibly maybe another eight, so 40 seats, maybe two shuttles' worth of students going up to Paly in the morning, when Paly has 2,200 students, I am curious as to why we can't strategize around trying to reduce all of those trips in the morning. Is there a way we could be looking at that?
Thank you, Mary Shepherd. You know, we have definitely been trying to find ways to introduce, you know, more redundancy within the system. And when we've developed the routes, you know, the peak kind of demand services that Richika discussed in the early part of the presentation, we pay extra money to make sure there's like a half-hour kind of service for the schools in the morning to make sure that that extra capacity is there. And they're attractive routes. Again, they're standing room only at times on almost all the shuttles. But from the standpoint of, say, looking at a larger bus for just a peak period of the day, that was something that we felt was cost prohibitive. But we can definitely develop and find those numbers and kind of bring them back to the council if there's an interest in that.
Well, it just seems to me that that's the one thing that we as Palo Alto can control. I think that when I'm looking at your West Shuttle concept, I'm curious as to, you're going from the Caltrain station at University Avenue all the way down into Mountain View, all the way down to Shoreline to Google. And although I'm fine with you going out and asking if they will share the expense, I guess my interest is trying to reduce trips in Palo Alto. And I'm not sure this reduces trips. So does this reduce trips when we're sending, when we're delivering people over to Mountain View in Google area?
Thank you, Mary Shepherd. If I can, let me just provide a little bit more description for the council for people at home regarding the West Shuttle. So it has a lot of different elements to it. One is, there is an introduction of a Palo Alto High School-specific shuttle route within the West Shuttle that does not exist today. So that was definitely one of our attempts to try and, you know, provide a route to reduce, you know, a type of auto trip within the community to at least up Palo Alto High School in an area where Palo Alto High School doesn't have its own specific type of a service. They piggyback on the Embarcadero run today. The way that the West Shuttle is proposed in the staff report to you is that in the morning, it would act as sort of a commuter express shuttle. It wouldn't stop at every route along the way in the morning. And it hit about five stops, leaving Palo Alto to eventually end up in the Shoreline Business Park. But on the way back, it would introduce an opportunity to reduce trips by providing a route to a Caltrain station that doesn't exist today. So for all those kind of same stops that we'd be kind of rushing to in the morning to pick people up and drop them off at Shoreline, we can pick people up on the same way back and drop them off at a Caltrain station, and that route doesn't exist. During the non-peak periods of the day, after that commuter shuttle express service would finish in the morning, both shuttles would stay just in the Palo Alto community. They wouldn't extend beyond the Jewish Community Center and introduce a reduced headway of about 35 minutes, 35 to 40 minutes, for Palo Alto residents to try to be more in line with the recommendations from Fair and Pierce for the Midtown to provide, you know, slower or reduced headways for the day. And then in the evening hours, then that commuter express concept kind of comes back. It goes back and it, you know, picks up people from the Shoreline Business Park, you know, takes them back to the Caltrain station. And then for the people that took Caltrain, you know, in the day, in the morning, they can then take it back in the evening. And that was the concept of the shuttle. So that is introducing an opportunity for a reduction of routes by getting people to Caltrain. So in that standpoint, maybe not so much for Palo Alto, but also reducing the trip, just in general, within the region because maybe someone doesn't have to drive to Regis City anymore. Maybe they can, you know, jump on our free shuttle and kind of take Caltrain into that city or somewhere to the south.
Okay, well, I guess getting back to my interest, which is to try to figure out some matrix that we can actually start to demonstrate what our trip reduction is with these routes is really important to me. So is the thinking then that if you get, you know, revenues from the companies, that that will actually subsidize a shuttle that does reduce trips for Palo Alto? Are you looking for a whole subsidy here or just partial in order to get over to that Google loop?
So what our goal would be, if we could go out to, with your permission, to businesses out in the Shoreline Business Park, we'd probably want to get somewhere at least around a 50% subsidy for the overall cost of a route. So just to use a number, and these aren't specifics, but if a shuttle costs us, say, $200,000, you know, to have just one shuttle, we'd ideally want to have at least two because a headway into the Shoreline Business Park and back from Palo Alto is about an hour and 20 minutes. That's a long, that's a really long headway, not a very attractive route to anybody. But if we could have someone, you know, fund a second shuttle, then that would reduce the headways down to a more reasonable amount of time. And then again, during non-period parts of the day, and even shorter headway because you wouldn't be going into another community anymore. So that would be the concept of what we would want as a goal before we come back to the council with some funding agreements.
So are we going out to then the JCC for sharing costs and SSL, Laurel, they've changed their name to SSL? Or are we just only going out to the Mountain View companies? Is that...?
We'd hit all those people up. We're not shy. I'm not shy when it comes to asking for money. And so we've already had the discussion with the Jewish Community Center. We haven't talked to Laurel, that's a good one. We've had discussions with Palo Alto Medical Foundation, you know, we've had discussions with other kind of small business areas. We've had discussions with Intuit and Google. I think there's other people that we can hit up. But we just, before we started getting too far, we just figured, hey, it's a really good time to stop, really get some more direction from the council before we do anything else.
I'd actually ask Town and Country as well. So, and I think that this is what I'm interested in. I'm trying to figure out how it is that we can structure this in a way so that we can actually measure the trip reductions overall as well. Because we're just suffocating in the morning and tripping over each other. And recognizing there's 13,000 kids in the schools now, about half of those are in secondary, so it's about 7,500. It's a lot of trips you could take off their streets every morning. If we wanted to focus on that, and I guess that's something that I might be interested in considering, is focusing on that and getting better transit out of our student population. Because I think that that could actually significantly change the experience in the morning. Now, just one last question then. Between Town and Country and Galvest Street, you go all the way down Paly on El Camino with this West Shuttle, the next stop would be California Avenue. I see a lot of people crossing over at Evergreen at either Sarah. Sarah, I think, is Park Boulevard on the Evergreen side. And I don't, are you, have you fixed your stops? Have you decided that these are your stops and you're not adding anymore? Because I think you're missing the, those that might be able to collect there. Because it's a long stretch between California Avenue and up to Town and Country.
Thank you, Mary Shepherd. We're definitely not set on that these are the only routes that would make sense for this route. I think that's another reason why we're here tonight. If there's interest in potentially looking at adding another stop, that's the effort that we want.
Okay, all right. Well, I think everybody else has covered the questions that I had. For example, how short the shopping shuttle is over to Stanford. That, to me, that just doesn't make sense. If I get stuck over there because something looks attractive, I would like to have flexibility without having to walk back. And getting stranded has always been, I think I've explained that before, when I used to ride the bullet up to San Francisco, you go in and out of University Avenue Station. You don't decide to park your car at California Avenue, pick up a local, and then come back on the bullet and get stuck at University and then have a gap. So when you are a user, things do shift and change. And so I think we do need to take that into consideration. So let's go out to the public. We have a few speaker cards on this. And then come back for action, considering the action that you've given us for the evening on this. And so we have Adina Levin, and followed by Robert Moss. You're still here? Good, thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. Adina Levin, friends of Caltrain, and with a lot of interest in the intersection between this program that we've been talking about this evening and the emerging transportation demand management program, which is moving forward. And I think we'll have the next study session at Planning and Transportation on Wednesday. And a question that came up from a number of different council members had to do with the fact that the survey, it's great to have the data about the people that are using the shuttle, but what about the people that are not using the shuttles? And that's really the focus of the typical methodology of the transportation demand management shuttle, where they would go to, for example, employers at Stanford Research Park, or go to residents in a particular neighborhood and say, what are your transportation choices now? What are the barriers? What are the reasons that you might drive today? And what are the things that would prevent you? So I would, I think there's two things that are moving forward, and maybe they will meet. And that's, I think, more of a question about what is the plan for these things to meet and utilize the data from the TDM surveying that will be done soon to help gather that information from those people who are not yet riding. Stop there. One thing I noticed in reading about the Embarcadero Shuttle, which is not proposed for any changes, there's a lot of use that's connecting to Caltrain. And there are some of those in the schedule where somebody would need to wait 15 minutes in between the Caltrain and the shuttle. And if somebody's adding 15 minutes, you got 15 minutes on the shuttle, maybe you have a half an hour on the Caltrain. And that's making your commute long enough that you might want to drive. So I would suggest taking another look at that and looking at opportunities to tighten that up, particularly with the data from the TDM survey saying, why don't you take transit? And then somebody will say, well, it takes me an hour and a quarter. Okay, if you cut out that 15 minutes, maybe that's a rider that you have. Another thing in terms of the metrics being used in terms of where the population for potential ridership is, we talked about the young and the old and the people who never drive. And I think that there's a new population to be looking at, and that's the car light. Those are those of us who do have a car in the driveway and the car sits in the driveway. And that is correlated with age, but not caused by age. And that would be another population to start to look for, for people who would have a preference to drive less. And then, you know, what are their needs as well? Because it's not just the people who don't drive at all. And if you look at Caltrain's ridership, 40% of Caltrain riders right now don't even drive at all. And they didn't even ask about the car light. So that's another thing to be looking at. Looking forward to the connections at how this, you know, meets with the TDM in the middle. Thank you.
Robert Moss to be followed by Mark Weiss.
Thank you, Mary Shepherd and councilmembers. Let me give you some perspective. Many of you probably don't know that Palo Alto had its own bus system more than 40 years ago. And it was designed to serve primarily residential neighborhoods. We had bus lines that went down Meadow, Charleston, Fabian, Lewis, down to El Camino. And the purpose was to get people out of their cars, and it worked. And then in the early '70s, the Palo Alto system was merged with VTA. And VTA said, we will keep the system working. We will preserve your local services. And it only took them a year before they started dropping bus lines. Five years, and we were gone. And they care so much about Palo Alto, they don't even have a bus line that goes to the Caltrain station at California Avenue. To be kind, VTA sucks. So we have to have our own system, and we should be talking about servicing the community and especially the neighborhoods. The West Shuttle line that's being proposed has some advantages. Going past schools, three or four schools, Mitchell Park, JCC, SSL, and also looping through some residential neighborhoods near Bayshore is a good start. But the section along El Camino needs to be tweaked. And let me give you a couple of suggestions. One of them would be to go down Arastodaro instead of going down Meadow. Or you go down Meadow, and when you get to El Camino Way, you turn left instead of turning right and go down to Arastodaro. And you can go down Arastodaro to, say, Georgia, and then up Georgia to Maybelle and back into Barron Park. And you go past the schools, you go past the park, go down Amarantha, and swing down to Barron School, Barron Park School, and get onto El Camino along Matadero. That's one route. Another route would be to go down Arastodaro all the way through into the Research Park, and then swing up and go up through Page Mill and come back up to El Camino. Another possibility would be to go into Ventura. You up Kurtner to Park, to Marguerite, and back down to El Camino. Because that's a neighborhood that's relatively poor compared to most areas. But the idea is to get the buses off of El Camino and get them into residential neighborhoods, either Barron Park or Ventura, or maybe even both. And bring them to eventually the Caltrain station at California Avenue. Now, one of the things that I want to warn you about, I was a member of the Transportation 2000 Study Committee Commission, which I'm sure almost none of you have heard of. And there's a real problem with staffing and paying because you have a need for a lot of buses at the beginning of the day during rush hour, and the evening during rush hour, and in the middle of the day, what do the workers do? You still have to pay them. Could be a real problem.
Mark Weiss to be followed by Herb Borack.
I agree with what Mr. Schmidt was suggesting or hinting at. I wonder if we can do more to try to work with Stanford on this with Marguerite. I wonder if we can do more to try to work with Stanford on this with Marguerite.
Thank you. Herb Borak to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
The draft survey responses aggregate the data from the three shuttle routes for each survey question. However, on Slide 11, it shows the breakdown for riders' destination by shuttle route. So, I asked the council to ensure that the final survey report shows survey responses for each question by shuttle route because they're going to be different, just as the ridership destinations are different. The proposal to increase the headways for the Crosstown Shuttle for part of the day is a partial restoration of the original shuttle program for Crosstown, which is 30-minute headways for the entire shuttle day. So, there should be data that show the change in ridership when the shuttle headways would change from 30 minutes to 60 minutes, to give you an idea of what the change would be when it's changed back for part of the day. In regards to the overlap such as on El Camino, we have two examples. One is that the former Crosstown Route included a route segment to Gunn High School. And that was removed when the VTA Community Bus Line was added, which is the bus line that has such high ridership. Secondly, the Embarcadero Route overlaps with a Stanford Route, which I believe is a commute route along Embarcadero to East Bay Shore. As regards the testimony by the Vista Center for the Blind before the Planning and Transportation Commission, they had to leave one location and they chose a location in Stanford Research Park, in part because there was a Marguerite route that went there. After they signed that lease, another part of Stanford did away with the route that would have been serving Vista Center for the Blind. Rather than coming to the city council and asking for some way to restore that, they should be going to Stanford. Now, whether that's a route or whether that's funding for a shuttle that would be owned by Vista Center for the Blind and paying for the driver, I don't know. But it seems to be their landlord, which is the one that eliminated the route that they needed to lease that space, should be the one that's helping them out. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephanie Munoz.
Mayor Shepherd, a couple of tweaks before I start to say what I have. It seems to me the easiest thing to get is the benches for the waiting riders. It doesn't depend on how many people use that bus stop. What it depends on is the frequency, that is to say, the length of time that people have to wait. It would be not difficult at all to put signs up on the bus stop, sign saying the 5:22 comes at, what, 1 o'clock, 1:20, and so forth, to this stop. That would not be difficult and it doesn't change. And the second thing would be to have seats like a contest for the artistic seat, the Art Nouveau seat, the prize-winning seat, or let people donate them. I see a little creativity there. Nancy Shepherd likes art a lot. Well, we could have artistic benches in a competition. No problem. What has puzzled me in this whole discussion is the concern about, or the conversation about ridership and marketing. That was astonishing to me. I hadn't thought that anything that wasn't money-making had a need for increasing ridership, it seemed to me. What you want to do is fill the need without spending money. And that means really fewer riders, or at least riders clustered in such a way that there are fewer trips or smaller buses. And that, I, when Councilmember Klein was talking about competition, I was thinking, yes, but there's a reverse competition. Because the VTA does charge for transfers, you can have a person going three mi, when I had a broken hip, I had this problem, you can have a person going three miles and having to pay for a transfer, which is expensive and makes a difference. And I think that it would be too bad for Palo Alto to have to pick up the slack from a lack in, or an unproductive sense of greed from VTA. And I should think that Liz Niss, who's only been, who's only been back a couple of years, would know all about the VTA and its policies. I'm sort of surprised that, I've always thought, in fact, I proposed some years ago, that we talk to, oh, sorry. I'll write you now. Thanks.
Thank you. And we're going to bring this back to council for action. Vice Mayor Niss.
So, putting this on track at this point, I am going to move that we provide direction to staff on the next steps, which increases the frequency of surface on the existing Crosstown Shuttle Route. This is particularly important, soliciting private sector funding. Oh, it was harder to read when it just went flat. Soliciting private sector funding to offset the costs of a new West Shuttle Route from the University Caltrain Station to the West Bay Shore Business Park and Mountain View. And I would add in there in that we not start the shuttle until we have funding. And initiating trial service between downtown University Avenue and the Stanford Shopping Center trolley in the summer of 2015.
Okay, there's no, oh, there's a second. Councilmember Price, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. But with your indulgence, Mayor Shepherd, could I ask Adina if she would just come to the mic for a minute? I think she may have some information about what Caltrain announced today. Do you have that? Because if so, I think there is going to be a new consortium of sorts between Caltrain and the business community in Silicon Valley. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. There is a alliance of major employers, including Google and Oracle and LinkedIn and a few more that I am not remembering, to help advocate for the funding that would be needed to add additional capacity to Caltrain to keep up with the goal.
Right. Thanks so much. I know that I had been alerted by the card woman as well, but I'm pretty sure you were at the announcement this morning.
Yes.
So, thank you very much.
Okay.
So, the reason I particularly asked Adina to speak to this is that I know that the private sector is very interested in how their employees get around in the valley. Caltrain is particularly important. But when this speaks to the University Caltrain Station, that's exactly those people, those employees, that will be heading toward Mountain View. And I think that they will be, since they're interested in helping with Caltrain and their funding, I think they'll probably be interested in helping with this as well. And I think it's really important that we engage all of those we talked about today, whether it's the schools, whether it's more support for VTA, whatever that may be. I think we need to be more aggressive. And I think we really need to go out, whether we're marketing, soliciting, whatever we may call it. I think it's important that we get out there and say, we're doing our very best to cut back on trips. We're doing our best to cut down on that carbon footprint. And we need everybody to help us out with this.
Councilmember Price, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I want to thank the staff and the consultant for their work and for the conversation and questions of my colleagues. I think that these proposals make sense and I think that the next steps will be good as we get a little bit more information. My concern, however, is that I feel like I've been witnessing scope of services creep. And so, I guess what I would like to ask is, given all the requests for information from my colleagues, does staff have the capacity to do that in this phase of the study? Or do we need to be, do you need to come back to us with, you know, is there, does this fall within the current scope or is there going to be additional consulting services needed for this?
Thank you, Councilmember Price. I think most of the information that the council members all asked for tonight is stuff that I think that we can definitely do as far as outreach into partners at VTA and SAM Trans. I think that from some of the information that was asked for, for comparisons of other programs, I think that we just have to do a little negotiation with our buddies at Fair and Peers. But we do have them on contract on other projects through the Bicycle Boulevard programs. So, there might be some opportunity to like, you know, maybe use one of another contract to help get some of that information.
Okay, thank you. One other quick point I wanted to add here, I know it's not directly related to the second. If I'm not mistaken, Marguerite does provide a route that goes to serve the Research Park. Now, unless that has been decimated in the last year or so, it does exist. And I do think we need to be aware of that. I wanted to ask the maker of the motion if you'd be willing to accept the following amendment, which is a point four?
Go for it.
Okay. Direct staff to discuss with PAUSD the reinstatement of an earlier adopted policy to provide $50,000 on an annual basis to the city to support shuttle services that benefit students.
I would have no trouble, I have no trouble supporting that. I don't think $50,000 is sufficient, though. Can we think of another way to put, you know, whatever amount we may think is-
Sufficient funding or at least $50,000?
Call it sufficient funding.
Okay.
Appropriate. Whatever it is, it's clear that we are augmenting this. And I think it's really important that it's recognized by the school district. This is, I mean, we're spending city money to do these services, which is important. And I think it's part of what we should provide. But as I said, I think all our partners in this should be putting something in. There should be, there should be some, you know, direct compensation for this kind of service.
Right. And I contend this would be less expensive than reinstating free bus services, which they do not have, except for students from East Palo Alto. And there are fee-for-services for students who live in Las Altos Hills and Palo Alto Hills.
In fact, thanks for adding that. That's very helpful.
So, I think that would be helpful. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's 20 to 10, so I'm hoping that we can move to the next agenda item quickly. So, yeah, I know, good luck. So, Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I think we all agree and want to cut single-car trips. And how can we do that in Palo Alto? And what you've presented tonight is a step in that direction. But if you look at what we have, I think we see that it's last mile and first mile. It's business travelers and school travelers, special interest groups that need these services. And I agree 100% with my colleagues that these should be shared cost. But we want to reach beyond that group that is already utilizing these services to others. And, you know, Palo Alto has special needs. We are less dense even than our neighbors. If you look at the numbers in the existing conditions report, looking just at the urban area, Palo Alto is well behind neighboring cities, San Jose, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, 25, 30% less dense as you go to other cities, especially cities that have successful transit programs. I mean, look at San Francisco, New York. We are one-quarter the density of the eastern cities. And we are a small community. So, how do we think about enticing more people on? It seems to me we're on the cusp of a revolution. You know, people talked about Uber and other forms of getting dedicated, individualized transit in a group mode. I think it's time for Palo Alto not to just say, gee, let's try more buses and put buses on different places at different times. But get what people want, individualized transit driven by information, where a taxi company, a van company with eight vans can take portions of the city and be on-call. And you can call a car, a van, pick me up 20, 25 minutes. I need to go downtown. And in that period of time, in that area, maybe there's four or five people that want to do the same thing. Take me back at this time to my house. And again, four or five people would be leaving the destination and come back. I mean, this is where technology is going. This is where Silicon Valley is going. This is what would get people out of their individual cars to the downtown, the business parks, to the Stanford Shopping Center, to dinner, to meet friends at the cafe, to expand their horizons, to give them the flexibility that a single vehicle gives them now without having to use their own vehicle. Seems to me in five years, that's where we're going to be. Why shouldn't we, as part of our com-plan discussions, begin to think about this? So, I'd like to add a number five to the discussion, that staff begins to explore with our consultants what kind of alternative technologies there are that we can use that can open up the taxi, van, information world to single-person travel from home to destination.
That's fine. You're looking into the future and with an economist's eye. So, I think that's good to incorporate. And you'll be very forward-thinking as you go forth with this.
Could I just get a little change that I don't think harms it? But could you just, could we just excise with consultants and, you know, we'll use them if need be, but not feel that we compelled to do this with consultants? Thanks.
I'm fine with getting rid of consultants. I was rather surprised you put them in, to be honest, Greg.
No offense.
Councilmember Price, are you okay with this?
Yes.
All right. Is that okay? Councilmember Klein? He's probably number six.
I'm glad to see the motion introduced. I think that it sets the right path for us tonight, with one exception, which I'll get to. I hope we do not use this as a way to get into lots of different details. We're still very much at the conceptual level and not into, for example, designing which routes are appropriate. I think that's way down the line and would get us really off-track tonight. One council member earlier talked about why would we be considering the, what we'll call the West Route? After all, we're taking people over to Mountain View. I would suggest that's not the way we want to look at these things. We have a significant amount of cut-through traffic, pass-through traffic, people who are coming through Palo Alto from the north or the south to get to Google and the other companies in Mountain View. And not all of our traffic problems, as we have talked about, are because of businesses in Palo Alto. They're, we're a region, we're not an island. And I think that we, it may very well be in our interest, and I think it definitely is in our interest, to reduce the amount of cut-through traffic. So, lots of people took Caltrain and then took this West Shuttle to Google and the other companies in Mountain View. I think that would probably be a big plus for our community and the region. One little thing- One little thing, Jaime, you mentioned a different name rather than calling it West Bay Shore, and that is?
I was calling it the Shoreline Business Park.
Well, that's, I think, a start, but I think there are a lot of companies like Google that are not part of the business park. They're, and Google is itself a business park, or, so maybe we'd call it the Shoreline Business District? Would you accept that?
If you feel that's more accurate, Councilmember Klein, we certainly will.
But now let me try to exclude item number four. I move that we delete item number four and replace it with direct staff to discuss with PAUSD additional methods to reduce the amount of student traffic to, student vehicular traffic to our schools in the morning and afternoon, and also to discuss with PAUSD, PSUD, sharing some of the cost of such methods.
You want this to be an amendment? So, would you accept that?
I, I'll accept it, I think it's rather awkward in its current form. Could you just hold on to a minute while, when someone else is talking and see if we can rewrite it?
Well, yes, and let me just very briefly before, say, the reason for it is I think it's inappropriate tonight to talk about a specific sum of money, given what else is on our agenda.
That's why we didn't put a specific sum in.
But also, I think there was another idea, and I think the mayor had mentioned it, of how do we reduce other, how do we find other ways of reducing the student vehicular traffic? And I think that you need to combine them, and so, those are my thoughts, and if you accept it-
Why don't you just leave that in there as number six instead of messing with number four?
Well, no, because that'd be duplicative to a significant degree.
I'm sorry?
It's, the cost, the cost is in this one as well.
I would just leave off sharing some of the cost because it's included in four.
No, number four is much more specific. You may have taken the number out, but it says reinstatement of an earlier adopted policy to provide appropriate funding on an annual basis to support shuttle services.
I hope you can live with that because I like the wording.
Well, I-
It really references what went on in the past, so that new school board members will know that this was actually, this existed in the past. This isn't something we just dreamt up. So, I'd really like to have it in there.
I think-
It should be an addition before.
Yes.
I think we ought to combine four and what you're calling six.
It's fine if you want to, but I said, could you make it a little smoother while some others fill in and we can-
I will try that and come back later, the mayor will call on me again. I just wanted to mention one other item in furtherance of Councilmember Schmid's amendment number five, which I definitely support, and just as an aside, that it's not just alternative technology, it's other innovative approaches, and even going back to other approaches, I remember from, that in many places in the country we used to have what were called jitneys, and this is a very old, doesn't require any fancy technology. Jitneys were private cars that would go on more or less prescribed routes, think of them as mini-buses, but privately operated, and they didn't have to worry about a lot of the details of being on schedules and headways and all that, that they would go, this is sort of like Uber, but in a different era, so if you had the time and you wanted to zoom up and down University Avenue or Embarcadero in the morning and pick up a bunch of people and carry them to University Avenue, great. So, I just mentioned that to say that sometimes we're too entranced by the new technology when there really are old solutions around. And I'll go on to, see if I can combine four and six.
Well, while we're still on this, if I could suggest to Councilmember Klein that after number four and where it says to support shuttle services that benefit students, could we then add just, and to discuss additional methods to decrease student vehicle traffic in mornings and afternoons?
Isn't that what we're saying? The third line starts, the fourth line, so additional methods to decrease student vehicular traffic?
Right, I said, can we add that to number four?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Got it, I'll be back to you.
Okay, let's move on to Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. So I agree with a lot with what Councilmember Schmidt was talking about, and also, Councilmember Klein mentioned earlier about metrics. I also would like to see the ridership metrics, I think that's a worthwhile thing, so I think I'd like to add a six where we have that you come back to us with a cost-per- rider metrics, I think that would be a good one. I don't know if that's acceptable.
It's fine. We're not deleting anything yet.
Nope, we're not deleting anything, I just wanted to add that. I also wanted to add a number seven, which was come back with plans to build a robust and user-friendly app. Is that? I don't think that's the same as five.
No, I actually think that's a very good idea, and I'm surprised we haven't brought up apps earlier tonight, to be honest.
And then, this is somewhat similar to what Councilmember Schmidt was getting to, but I think it's more concrete, and I think it's slightly different. So I think we should have something in there that says come up with a plan for a convenient, easy-to-use shuttle or rideshare that provides mobility for the entire city and is more convenient than driving. That's sort of the big, robust shuttle system that we used to have that Bob Moss sort of looked at, talked about prior to, and I don't know how that's too expensive, I don't know what it costs, but we're not going to look at shuttles again for a number of years, and I would like to know what this actually looks like if we were to do this right. And so, for instance, if our meeting got done at 11, I could take a shuttle home, that would be nice. Well, it's a little cold and it's late, and, you know, that's a good point. You know, the riding the bike thing, there are many times I would like to ride my bike, but I'd like to know that I have a way to get home if I leave my bike and that I have a way to get back to my bike. And there's a lot of those things, I'd like to know that I could go to dinner, I'd like to know that I could actually walk to California Avenue, for instance, and then at night when it's 9:30 or whatever and it's cold and I want to, you know, have a shuttle back, that I could do that. And the same with going downtown. I think there's lots of opportunities for making this convenient and easy to use, where, as our city manager said with the app thing, it would be great if we could just look it up on the app, jump on the shuttle, and go. It's gotta be convenient, and I don't know what that looks like, but that wasn't your charge to start with in this, I mean, that's clear to me, and I'd like to see what that would look like. So, I don't know, I'd like to add in a number, well, I don't have number, can we have number six in first, which they agreed to, which was the cost-per- rider metrics? So, staff will come back with us with cost-per- rider metric, metrics, not matrix. Staff will come back for the shuttles. And then number seven was staff will come back with plans to build, to build a robust and user-friendly app. That provides enough information, I don't have to spell it out. And then number eight, if you accept it, was come up with a plan for a convenient and easy-to-use shuttle or rideshare system that provides mobility around the entire city and is more convenient than driving.
You know, rather than getting quite that prescriptive, I think if you go back up to Councilmember Schmidt's edition, which was number five, if you're comfortable with that, that pretty much says the same thing.
So if I was comfortable with that, I wouldn't have suggested the other one. So, no, I think this is more concrete, I think that is useful, and I think that goes in different directions. I think this says to staff, come up with a concrete plan, and let's see what it costs, and let's see if we should do it. And the argument for that is that I don't think we're going to look at the shuttle stuff again, and once they're looking at it once, they might as well look at it in a more robust way that gets people out of their cars. And I think it's worth taking a strong look at how we would provide a convenient way for residents to get around the city.
You know, Greg, I'm glad to leave it in, it's getting on to 10 o'clock, but I think that, I think it does get redundant, but if you're more comfortable can only support this, if your three amendments get in, your three additional requests, then let's go with it.
Okay, great.
But I think we're giving staff, you know, more than a meal to digest, so I'd say that's, that would be the most dicey of the ones that you're adding, but-
Second, or is it accepted?
You're not accepting it. Then the second- Do you see why or not? Pardon? No, you just don't accept it, so you're going to need to have a second on that.
Okay, do I have a second or no second? I guess I have no second.
I'll say it.
Okay.
We're gonna, this is huge, it's huge. But, okay, Councilmember Scharf, do you want to speak to your first, to your motion?
I do want to speak to it. I think, I think we need to be clear on what our goals are here, and I think we think too small. I think one of our goals should be to provide a convenient way for our residents to get around the city without using cars, and I don't know what that would cost. But if we're not willing to do that, we are not thinking this in the big picture, and we're missing an opportunity to do this right. And I think that that's a huge mistake, and I just want to have the information that staff says it would cost this much money to provide a convenient way to get around a shuttle. People talk about how wonderful the San Monica Blue Bus System is, well, that's what that is. It's a convenient way to get around your city. And, you know, I think that we don't have to be a city where there's not a way to get around without using a car. And, so I would really like us to take a look at this and do this.
Councilmember Berman, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so I totally agree, and I'm not sure why this is seen as such a big deal. I'm underwhelmed by the, not, I'm underwhelmed by the suggestions that have been made so far, not necessarily because of the suggestions, but because the need is so big, and I don't think this does address the entirety of the need. Now, you weren't going to accomplish that in this task, and so I'm not saying that I expected you to, but, you know, I do want us to come back to this. I don't want this to be a couple of years before we come back to discuss the shuttle system some more, because I think we've determined tonight that there's a lot of data that we still need, and some of it's what Adina was talking about with some of the TDM ridership, some of it was, you know, reaching out, as Chair Michael was talking about, to the folks who aren't riding our shuttles. Those are the people that we need to be talking to, that's the information that we need to get, so we can put together an entire shuttle system, or a more robust shuttle system, that really addresses the needs of more of our residents. And I think that's what the city manager initially, you know, had in mind when he was talking about this six months ago, when we set aside a million dollars. I mean, I just had a bigger plan in mind, and I understand that we don't have that data yet, and so we can't put together that bigger plan, but let's get that data and let's put it together, and that's what I see Councilmember Scharf's amendment saying is, this isn't, we're not done, and let's look bigger. And yes, you know, staff, I hope, was going to do this anyhow, but I think it's important that we make it a priority to say, let's go out, let's get a lot of the data that we still need, let's not lose sight of having a more robust shuttle system, and let's come back in nine months or 12 months, you know, with some new ideas of maybe new shuttle routes that have been identified. Once we have some of those, some of that data about what are the most popular places people get off, what are the most popular places people get on, reaching out to folks who don't use it and saying, why don't you use it? Is it because you haven't heard of it? Is it because it's not convenient enough? Is it because you don't think it's safe? Is it because you need benches? You know, let's have that conversation, and that's what I view, I mean, that's kind of some of the broader comments that I was going to make in general, but I think it addresses a lot what Councilmember Scharf is talking about. So I don't understand, you know, how that's a bad thing, I think it's absolutely moving in the right direction of having a more robust shuttle system that can really get everybody to stop using their car so much. Thus, speaking of this amendment, correct?
Actually, yes, and I'm going to go to the city manager, because I actually think that this is maybe too big of a conversation for tonight, so I was wondering if maybe we should table this portion of the motion for another evening, because it is a large, and what is your response to this?
Well, I, thank you, Meta Mayor. I don't know if there is in some way to maybe start doing some of the, I'm just doing this on the fly here, not exactly as an amendment, but as some, like, say, an advisory, because I guess, number one, I don't read the amendment the way it's worded right now, it's being limited to just shuttles and expanded shuttle, for number one, so that would need a clarification. But number two is, I think that the council has already, over this past year, had a pretty broad conversation about how to respond to the traffic and parking demands, and there, you've set in motion direction on a whole bunch of different fronts, different ways to deal with parking, the shuttle, the remote parking lot, we're going to have some big discussions on TMA programs that, for example, are going to have to involve shuttle issues just as a component in that, which would be part of this expansion. So that's just one thought. The other is, I do worry sometimes, like, with an amendment like this, the council could partic-
Amendment's not correct, by the way.
Okay.
It's not what I actually said. So maybe we should get the wording right, because then you can address it.
Okay.
So the wording was, come up with a plan for a, come up with a plan for a convenient, easy-to-use shuttle-
Okay.
-or rideshare system that provides mobility, provides mobility for the, around the entire city, and is more convenient than driving.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, that is an expansion of what we've done, I mean, to this point, right, because clearly you guys wouldn't be asking it if we'd solved everything. So, I guess that I would just want clarification that I think we just would need to be able to come back with a more detailed response to what this piece of it would take in addition to the others, but, you know, so that there, I don't want to have confusion that all of a sudden it's January and everyone says, where's the app? And we give you a report, and you say, well, what about this mobility thing? We say, well, wait, that's a, that's a larger task, it's going to involve more sorts of things that you have, and an understanding of what it would take for us to deliver that. So, and the reason I, I'm not saying advisory was right, but I clearly understand the intention that you don't want to leave the meeting tonight acting as if you have addressed the full range of the challenges just on the shuttle component of our mobility challenge. So you want to put that on the record. I just want to have the staff to have the freedom to be able to come back to give you a more detailed responses to-
So that would be fine with me.
-in timeline and that sort of thing that we do. What it would take to do that?
Yeah, I think that this is, for me, this is a large conversation. It's not that I don't want to go there, I just think at the hour, it's 10 o'clock at night right now, and we, and we have three other things on the agenda, and I would, if there's a way we can ask the city manager to maybe take this as a concept-
Says come back.
Yeah, and so-
I mean, it says come back.
Okay.
It doesn't say come back tomorrow. Yeah, with a plan.
But, of course, I have four people to speak with, so we will-
May I say one last thing? I'd like to feel free that, I mean, you've got seven directives up there, that we're able to kind of come back as we need to for council action or something incrementally along the way, so it's not like we have to wait for everything to be all tied up in one big response. I mean, we may come back pretty soon with whatever, a budget amendment to do one piece of this if we need to do it, knowing that something else will follow, as long as we're clear about that. We good?
I'm good with that.
Okay, I've got four speakers.
I know we're not having verbatim minutes yet, but I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be the case.
Okay, Councilmember Price.
Are we speaking to this proposed amendment, or is that off the table?
This amendment, yeah.
Okay. I absolutely do not think this is necessary, I think it's gilding the lily. My blunt reaction to this is I think it's insulting to staff, because this is clearly the direction, and there are a lot of things that the staff has said, I mean, Jaime said that they're working on- said that they're working on, that will come back to us. I think we have to have a little more faith and respect in the professional expertise of the people sitting right in front of us. And I, I think this is not necessary. It's basically saying to them, from my perspective, do things that you were going to do anyway. They are not sitting there and saying that this revisions to the shuttle program and the expansion of the shuttle program is the end game. It clearly is not. So, I think this is unnecessary and inappropriate.
Councilmember Klein?
This amendment.
I move to continue consideration of proposed amendment number eight.
I'm sorry, the continuation of the amendment?
I, I move to continue consideration of proposed amendment by Councilmember Scharf, which has been labeled number eight.
Can you tell me, continuing, is that something that we need a second for?
I think you, yeah, you need a second.
Okay. So, I have a second from Councilmember Price.
No discussion, Madam Mayor.
That's what I thought. So, we're just going to go ahead and vote on this.
And what's the vote?
To continue.
If you vote yes, then we will continue it. If you vote no, then it dies. And we will take, and we will continue to have the conversation about it.
The rest of the motion.
So, if you vote yes, then we will continue this to another night, and the conversation will stop. If you vote no, then we will continue to have the conversation about this amendment. So, is that clear? And everybody's voted, so the motion carries with Councilmember Scharf, Bert Berman, and Schmidt voting no.
So, point of order?
Yes.
I can't find it in my-
Your mic.
Point of order.
Yes, point of order. I can't find in our procedures here where it is not a motion to a specific time, where you just continue. Our motion says, the motion continues amended to another specified time. And it also says that it requires a second, is amendable, and is debatable as to the propriety of the amendment and time set. So, I'm just looking for where it says, what the city attorney said, which was that it's not debatable. All right, okay, maybe I got it wrong. Councilmember Klein said that.
We're just looking for continuing it to a time certain. Is that what you're asking for?
That is what I'm saying. I'm also pointing out that it is actually debatable.
What is debatable, then? The time certain?
No.
The motion.
The whole motion to continue.
Okay, so we can have a conversation about that. All right. So, I'm sorry, I'm looking to the city attorney right now to see, so you're, you're agreeing that we're going to, that I did this vote in a wrong? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think we're refining our, our procedures here as we go.
Okay.
So, you're, Councilmember Scharf is correctly reading from the council's procedures, which, as the council knows, are a, a general restatement with some modifications of the, of the general parliamentary rules, known as the Roberts Rules. And so, your procedures do govern, and they say that a motion to continue to another specific time can be made. It requires a second, it's debatable, and it carries on a simple majority. So, we didn't quite get that right.
I stand corrected, that, that's correct. On the, I had the continuation confused with the motion to end debate.
Which requires a supermajority, that's correct. That's slightly different.
Right, right, that's what.
Okay, so-
But the only thing that, so we can have debate, but I would remind the mayor that the motion, debate on a motion to continue is limited to the discussion as to whether we should continue, not the merits of the particular motion.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, do I need to rescind the vote, then?
Why don't we just consider it rescinded with a nod of acclamation, and let's do it again?
I'll clear the lights here, and we are going to take up the motion to continue.
And if you take a long time, probably you're going to end up with the unanimous vote to continue it if you don't get to it pretty quickly.
Okay, I've cleared the lights, and so, the motion is, is ready for comments.
Well, it's actually not. I will move the, the motion to continue is, to continue to the meeting of our, the first Monday in December.
So, I'm fine with that, if everyone wants to do that. I'm absolutely fine to talk about this on the first Monday in December. So, why don't we just agree to accept that into the motion as an amendment, and we can all move on?
At least that we can still have the opportunity to discuss it.
Oh, that's true. You don't want to give me that.
Oh, please.
No, I do. I have to give you that, too.
Please. That's going to be-
It is the night that we're taking up the residential permit parking.
Doesn't make any difference.
The, the, the motion needs to refer it to a specific meeting.
Okay, so, on December 1st?
Whether or not we need to hold it to that meeting, I don't know if that's the case. And I don't mean to be difficult about that, you're just, no.
No, I think you need to hold it to that meeting.
We could start the meeting earlier, I guess, so.
Well, then, we ought to have a process for identifying when things get continued in the future.
Well, actually, the motion is to continue to December 1st.
Do you accept that as a second, or?
I do reluctantly. My, can I just say, my concern is, will the staff have enough time to come back with information so we can continue this?
Point of order.
Not. I'm concerned about this.
But that's getting to the merits, is to talk only about what-
Actually, now we get to debate.
I think that goes to, goes to the question of, of whether the item should be continued. But I, I think what was anticipated is that, not that the substance of the matter would come back, in that there was the full plan, but the conversation about what the staff would be directed to do this.
Right. So, that's-
Yes, yes, I'll get a second.
On the first. So, Councilmember Schmidt, want to speak?
Yeah, clarification on the amendment. I heard when the amendment was made twice, the maker said shutter, shuttle or ride-share program, and that is not in the text. What is the motion?
It was shuttle or ride-share program.
Yeah, so that should be in the amendment.
It really should say shuttle and/or.
Okay, it looks like there's, okay, does anybody want to speak to this being continued? And I don't see any lights. Councilmember Holman?
I'd like to speak.
Just a quick clarifying question, and this will make some of the other of it go faster, too. So, I guess the question might be for staff on this. So, I am interested and concerned about program and mobility issues for those neighborhoods in the research park west of El Camino. So, I guess what my question is, to the maker of the motion, does this include, it's both the maker and the motion, and, and staff, does this motion or amendment include-
I think we're only allowed to talk about whether we continue it or not right now.
Right.
And then, when we continue it, you can bring up that concept.
Well, here's the reason that it applies now. So, if I say, okay, I'm good with continuing this, what's it include or not?
Well, that's just-
And that will develop the motion more. And that will depend on whether I make an amendment to the original motion or not.
Okay.
So, that's why-
Right now, we're only talking about continuing it. And so, when it continues to the first, then you can develop the amendment further for your interest, because we won't be taking it up for any action, any, so it's just whether or not you want to continue to talk about it tonight, or if you want to move it to the first. So, with that, I see no more lights. Let's go ahead and-
I did want to just say one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council, City Manager.
So, I mean, just as an aside on this, so, I do, do think in the future, we want to find some way to be a little more facile on when we pick a date, to be able to tell the implications of the date. But secondly, I understand all we're going to end up doing is coming back for this continued discussion, and I did want to, I did have something to say about that after you vote to continue. Will there be the opportunity to do that?
I suppose. I, I'm not sure what it is you want to say.
Well, the main thing I just wanted to say is, you're really not directing us to do anything right now.
Between now and the first, no.
But that being said, we would probably take the liberty to try to give a little bit of logistical schedule assessment on this, which we'd be in a better position to do on that night than we are on the fly right now.
Okay. Good. All right, thank you. And let's go ahead and vote. So, if we vote yes, that we will take this up on the first, in the, exactly the form we have it right now. And that is unanimous. So, back to the original motion, which goes through item seven, and I had two more people speaking on the original motion, I think. Oh, no, yes, just one, Councilmember Berman.
Councilmember Scharf, you were finished? Yeah, could we scroll back up, if we get a chance? So, I am fine with, with pretty much everything, except for, you know, I'm really not that excited about this trial service between downtown and Stanford Shopping Center, at least not as a lunchtime thing, which I think was the original plan, and, and nothing's been changed to that. And so, I'm assuming that's still the plan as, as the motion reads. You know, reading the, the, I think it was the consultant's report, I can't remember where it was in this, you know, talking about how, let's say I'm a worker downtown, and I, you know, it's 10 minutes to walk to and catch this trolley. It's 10 minutes on the trolley. It's five minutes to walk to a restaurant, either downtown or at Stanford Shopping Center. There's going to be a line, you know, it's going to take 15 minutes, 20 minutes to get food. I've got to immediately get back to that trolley and get back to work. I'm not going to do that. I mean, I'm just not going to, I'm not going to use the trolley for that purpose. And if I'm a service, or, you know, a service worker at Stanford Shopping Center, I probably only have an hour for, for lunch. There's not a lot of flexibility there for, for folks in that industry. So, I just don't understand, I think it makes a lot more sense, I understand it's just a trial basis, but if we're going to do it as a trial basis, you know, let's, let's expand the time of it. I'd be curious to know, A, how many, you know, what do you think, and B, what, you know, approximately what you think the cost impacts might be to doing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Berman, for the opportunity to respond. At least based off the discussion that we had earlier, we would not come back to you sometime in December, or whenever it is that we do return with just a lunchtime shuttle. I think that we need to do some more research internally, talk to our kind of MV transportation partner about additional kind of costs, and then that's, we would return to you with more discussion later for something beyond just the lunchtime period.
Okay, so this is initially initiating trial service, I mean, this seems like we're just talking about diving right in. So, maybe we need to reword it to say that you guys are going to come back to us with, you know, more information and, and maybe an alternative plan. So, I-
Ask if you need to reword it, or if that's what you're saying.
Sure, it was sure. I mean, I mean, it sounds like you said that's what you're going to do, it's just that I read the motion, and it looks like we're going to start it. So, I mean, that's what the motion says.
To design a trial service rather than that and return to council before-
Sure.
Implementation.
I mean, if that works for the, yeah, great. That's all I had.
Councilmember Burt?
I'd just briefly say that when this comes back to us on the broader level, I think we need to be looking at long-term funding sources, because it's fine for us to embrace what I think we all are enthusiastic about, but we really don't have the identified funding sources to support this. And I think there may be some possibilities, but this needs to be part of the conversation.
Councilmember Holman?
Two things. I think if you scroll down, I think the amendment passed, I think that language needs to be deleted since we rescinded that vote. I think all of that can go away, right? Yeah. Well, the vote, Larry did- The vote was rescinded.
Yeah, just rescinding the vote, and then, we need to put, oh, I see. You put it down below, so it's down below.
Right. It's restated, Councilmember Klein refined his motion, so both the amendment and the amendment passed can be deleted. Or, you could note that it's rescinded. Good.
Or that, that's fine. Okay. And then, thank you for clarifying the record. And then, I have a, if you scroll back up, then, scrolling back up, I have a number eight amendment, which is direct staff to return with additional consideration of shuttle service for west of El Camino, including Stanford Research Park, considering employment nodes.
I'm trying to look back on this, Councilmember Holman, and see if that's redundant in any way. Let me just ask staff. If not, I'm okay with that. Is, have you included this in here anywhere? We're now up to number eight, so I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're not being redundant, what we're asking you to do.
I don't see it anywhere.
If they don't see it anywhere, I'm willing to accept that. Second, dear?
I have, can I ask?
It's, it's a different, it's exploring a new shuttle route, am I correct?
Yes, and, yes.
And it simply says-
And they, they looked at it, they looked at it.
It says consideration.
Yeah, it's just consider. And it's, if you look on slide eight, it talks about a Rastodaro road between El Camino and Fertile Expressway, for instance, but it doesn't talk about Research Park. And as Councilmember Burt mentioned, you know, there are strong employment nodes in that area that seem to have not been considered. It seems to be considered as an average of employment density. And you don't, in the, in the amendment, you don't need a comma after, on the last line, you don't need a comma after park.
I, I will reluctantly agree, I guess the point is, the Marguerite already serves Research Park, 88 serves the Rastodaro Quarter, so this is kind of, looking at this without full consideration of existing services now, it seems a little bit unnecessary, but I would like, for the sake of moving ahead, I'll say fine.
But that way, we're going to know if the existing service is adequate, and if not, it's something we could look at in the future.
Exactly, and that's true of several of these things that we've talked about here. There's also other service that we need to be coordinating with.
Could I just clarify, just so we don't get in hot water down the road on this? I mean, additional consideration is kind of a vague term, right? So, the idea is, we're not implying that this is going to necessarily result in a recommendation one way or the other. I mean, it's a consideration, we may come back with pros and cons, and that sort of thing, versus, here's a route that can work, for example. I mean, that could be a possibility, but on the other hand, we could just come back with-
I think it's more of those data points that we've been talking about to getting to tonight, and Jaime is smiling and nodding, or maybe just nodding.
No, no, I'm just nodding because I actually agree with what you said. I think that as we get more of those data points, we can begin to answer some of that questions that Karen Holman's asking, Councilmember Holman's asking.
Okay, thank you. And my only interest is in item number four, which is trying to decrease the student vehicular travel or auto trips. I'm in, I'm actually interested in seeing whether or not we can work with the school district to do a transit management system between the secondary schools, in particular, the high schools in specific, because I think that, that is trouble over at Gunn like it is at Pallie. And, does this give you enough latitude to have that conversation? As it reads-
Thank you, Mayor Sherpa. I think it does give us latitude. I think we have a lot of things that are already in motion that we can come back to you on right away.
Right, okay, super. All righty. In that case, let's go ahead and vote on the entire motion, which I'm supposed to read, but it's very long, so I'm not going to.
I think we can read it.
And that motion carries unanimously. Great, thank you. And it is 10:30, almost 10:30, and we have three items to take up. Item number 8A, which was formerly item number two, along with, we do need to make appointments for the National League of Cities, and then the Cover League, a closed session, open then closed session. So, are we willing to take all three of these items up tonight?
Is item number two time-sensitive?
8A is, Jim, is item number 8A time-sensitive? That's the, our Palo Alto contract, the tier contract.
Well, it's only time-sensitive in, the longer we put it off, the longer it is that we start doing the work. I don't think there is a requirement toward the contract like this week, so it's not time-sensitive.
Okay. Okay. In that case, why don't we schedule that one for another meeting? If that's okay with everybody? And then let's go into making appointments for the National League of Cities, and that's item number nine. And I would like to just say that this is somebody, we've got four councilmembers going, Vice Mayor Niss, Councilmembers Holman, Klein, and Price. You have to be there for number, November 22nd, and since the Vice Mayor's going to be there, I was going to nominate her, and nominate Councilmember Holman, if the two of you are going to be there on Saturday. Would that be okay? And then I, then I'll need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? In that case, let's go ahead and vote. And you two are now appointed unanimously. And then our final item to take up tonight will-
Who will vote for it?
That will come forward later. The final item for tonight will be an update on Coverley. We have that scheduled for open session, but the city manager, I think, is going to ask us to take it into closed session. So I'm going to let the city manager explain where we are.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a follow-up to our last session on this, and I have had the opportunity to loop back with the school superintendent, and I really think that I just need, I'm hoping tonight, some one last bit of final direction, and with any luck, we ought to be able to bring something to the council in open session shortly.
And I had one speaker on this, but I don't see him in the audience, that's Mark Weiss, and so I'm going to close the public comment, yeah, and go ahead and entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Second?
All right, let's go ahead. Is there any discussion? No, let's vote.
You can go ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, right, but would, I didn't have any cards.
We, we allow for public comment on every item, so would you like to speak to this item? Why don't we go ahead and take you? And you can fill out a card afterwards. You'll have three minutes. So our, our speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Shepard, for that exceptional kindness. I want, I want you to think about for a moment how we arrived at the position of having a lease with the high, with a Palo Alto Unified School District for property. It was because the school district foolishly, I can't think of any other word, disposed of surplus properties when it looked as if they were surplus, and the city perceived that it was very, very imprudent to do that, because the price of land, the value of land was rising exponentially. And so the city tried to bail them out and make an arrangement that would save them from their own folly. Now we come to a point at which the, the value of land in Palo Alto is so great that teachers cannot live in Palo Alto. And what is a school? A school is teachers. It's not gymnasiums, it's not a theater, it's not building, it's teachers. If we have land now, not, not a lot of land, but we have a stake, Palo Alto owns eight acres in the Coverley, old Coverley School District. That acres could be used for rental housing for teachers, nice rental housing for teachers, attractive rental housing for teachers. The, the uses to which that land is put right now could also be accommodated in the very same building. They could be the lowest floor of a large apartment building. The large apartment building would still fill in the requirements of the floor allowance ratio, because it would have the whole of Coverley School around it as, as its, as its open space. I, I thank you for this opportunity. If you could only, only see that it would be a crime, a fiscal crime, to give up this opportunity. And I know the city has a high-minded feeling about not making money. Oh, that's a terrible sin for a city to make money. But you were able to overcome that in Maybelle, and you're able to overcome that in the water utilities, so it seems to me maybe you could bend a little bit and take some money from these teachers who are looking for a place to live and can well afford a, a, a place to live that's comparable to, say, Fresno or Sacramento. They could do that, they could pay for the lodging they have, and with, and you wouldn't lose anything. Thank you, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, and can we see the vote to go into closed session? Donna? We're, we voted to go into closed session, can we see the vote?
Okay, people could vote.
Well, we're up to a quorum.
Who didn't vote?
Okay. I, I think it's unanimous, so let's go ahead, and, yeah, there we go, we just need Bert. So, yeah, we're good. Thank you.